Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 4th, 2025, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members, Asadunian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Karpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Mary Najarian.
Here. Will you all please rise and join me in the flag circle? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing, and we are honored to have with us today Rabbi Simcha Bachman of the Chabad of Glendale and Foothill Communities. Welcome, Rabbi.
Good evening. Mayor, council member, and fellow citizens of Glendale, let us pray. On this day when the citizens of our country exercise one of the most fundamental rights in a democracy, the right to vote, we pause for a moment of reflection and gratitude. We give thanks for the freedoms and opportunities we share and for the privilege of living in a city where the voices of all residents are valued and heard. We ask for guidance and wisdom for those who serve in public office. May they approach their responsibilities with integrity, fairness, and humility. May they be attentive to the needs of every resident, seeking solutions that strengthen our neighborhoods, promote safety, and enhance the quality of life for all. May our city council members be guided by the well-being of our city. May their decisions reflect thoughtful deliberation, compassion, and courage. May their service inspire confidence, trust, and hope among all who call Glendale home. On this election day, we also reflect on the power and responsibility of every single citizen. May we each participate thoughtfully, casting our votes with care, awareness, and respect for the democratic process. We pray for unity in our diversity across cultures, beliefs, and perspectives. May we celebrate the many contributions that make Glendale vibrant, resilient, and welcoming. May we seek common ground, foster understanding, and act with kindness in all our interactions, remembering that the strength of our city comes from the collective efforts of its people. May all of us, as residents and participants in civic life, be inspired to contribute positively, building a community of which we all can be proud. Amen.
Amen. May we have your report.
Yes. The agenda for the November 4th, 2025, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on October 30th, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Before we go on, I'd like to announce that I will be enforcing the 11:00 PM closure rule. That is, no new items on the agenda would be taken before 11 o'clock expires. We would continue with public hearing, the second part of public comment after that time. However, I'm also going to try and enforce the five-minute rule on initial council comments and on any particular item, at which point we would go to a round of three minutes. We may have a long meeting. We're not, of course, you never know what's going to happen, but I just would like to keep the meeting rolling and let my colleagues and the public know that we're going to try and run it by these rules that we had already adopted months ago. Next item, please.
Next are consent items, and the only item on consent is the minutes of the meeting of October 21st.
I'll move the approval of the minutes.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council members, Asadunian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mary Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next are city council and staff comments, including reports from conferences and regional meetings.
Start with Councilmember Brotman.
Okay. So, last week, I think it was, a resident of Ivy Street came and spoke to us about parking pads, if you recall. She organized a meeting of her neighbors last night, which I attended, and we discussed the issue in the neighborhood. They're under a lot of pressure because of, you know, starting with just a difficult situation with parking. But added to that, you know, the addition of ADUs and the fact that, you know, more people are staying in their, in their parents' homes as they get older and, you know, they get a car and et cetera. So, there's a lot of pressure in that area. Apparently, people started putting in these parking pads many years ago, in some cases, over a decade ago. And there was not, not an issue, but suddenly, I believe it was because of a complaint, code enforcement went out and cited seven residents who have these parking pads, telling them that they need to have them removed. I think this is something we're going to need to figure out. I understand why the code is the way it is. I think it's well-intentioned, but we're going to need to get creative and think of how we can make some workarounds. In the meantime, I would request that we put a stay on enforcement for these seven residences. It seems quite unfair when there are many in the surrounding neighborhood that have the same situation and probably in many parts of Glendale, and we have not been enforcing to go after these seven people, I think is, is not the right approach. So, I would ask, and I don't know if this needs to be agendized, I hope not, but I would ask if, if there are no objections from my colleagues that staff put a stay on enforcement while they consider potential solutions, which I know will not be simple, but I at least want us to have time to look at what we can do here.
I support that absolutely.
I support that as well.
So, will this be a new business item with a report?
Does it need to be, or does staff have the discretion? I don't, I'll leave it up to you.
Mayor Najarian, City Council, I would highly recommend for it to come back as a new business item, not to make the process bureaucratic, but for us to be able to look at what the challenges are going to be with that stay and what the implications are going to be so that you all are on the same page. I'm not saying can't be done. I'm saying let us bring you a report back rather quickly and so that you and the public know what the implications are going to be.
Okay, so long as we're not enforcing on people in the next however many weeks it takes to get this on our agenda. I don't want, I don't want.
We did receive a letter that was regarding this situation. So, it was maybe a mini-report had already been.
Right.
I think it's something we should discuss.
Yeah.
Okay, so that will be on a new business item for the week after. Are you, is that it?
I'm finished. Thank you.
Councilmember Asadunian.
I just wanted to let everybody know that I was actually in Canada last week with the Burbank Airport Authority. We actually got recognized as Level Two and received accreditation and an award for environmental stewardship by the World Airport Council. I was also there during the Dodgers games, and it was a one-woman Dodgers parade, and I just want to say thank you to the Canadians for being so nice because I was not being very nice about us winning, but thrilled that we won. So, I also want to give a big shout-out to the Commission on the Status of Women and Chief Brooks. I know I wasn't present, but I was with you in spirit when you named our fire stations safe havens for any domestic violence victims. And so, moving forward 24/7, if anyone needs assistance, needs a place to go, needs resources, you can stop by at any of our fire stations. I think in conversation, we were talking about how these are the simple things. Sometimes you don't even recognize that needed to be announced, but my understanding is our firefighters are equipped to take them on and provide the right resources. So, just want to say thank you to everyone involved, and I'm sorry I missed it.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian.
I think you'll probably speak about the events we attended in honor of His Holiness Aram the First of the Great House of Cilicia. All right, well, the mayor and I had the privilege of attending a mass at St. Mary's Armenian Church this weekend here in Glendale, where His Holiness Aram the First, who's the Catholicos of the Great House of Cilicia, one of the two important figures in the Armenian Apostolic Church. It was very well-attended. This was his visit to the Armenian diaspora in commemoration of the 30th anniversary of his ordination as Catholicos of the Great House of Cilicia, and there were a number of functions in regard to that, and that was pretty much most of the weekend. Thank you. I have nothing else.
Thank you. Mr. Karpetian.
Nothing personally, but I, you know, we go to different events and speak to different members of the community, and some of them were kind of more involved than the others. They were telling us that, they're telling me that they're kind of, they don't know how to catch up with everything that the council has put on the, on their plate in the last year or so. It's not that because they're not in the, they're not in, in the field, they're not professionals, they're trying to catch up and attend every meeting. They said, you have all these elements, like housing element, mobility element, environmental justice element, bike master plan, SLA, parking lots, code changes, downtown parking lots, Locust Center Avenue, districting, BRT, SB 79. They said it's very difficult to catch up with everything, to, to be really alert and understand what's going on in the city and come up with an educated idea or suggestions for any of these elements. So, I just wanted to just relay the message to my colleagues, and maybe we need to give people a chance to read and observe and digest all of this information so they can come up and have an educated suggestion for us, if you will. If you want to have a public engagement and get public to attend our, our public meetings or what have you. I think we need to give them a little bit of breathing room. That's all I have to say. And I'm just relaying their message, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess, I guess it depends which messages you read. There's a whole string of opinions indicating that we should not be taking a week off during our month of meetings and insist that we continue to put the pedal to the metal. We have done a lot of things, definitely. I think it is important that we take that one week a month off so staff can catch up, we can catch up, and as you mentioned, the public can also catch up. And this is a representative government, and that's, that's just the way it works. We're, no one can blame us for not working hard, I guess. Of course, well, they shouldn't blame us for not working, or they, they will blame us, I'm sure, in one way or another. I would like to add to the events that were occurring over the weekend, the Glendale Health Fair, which was held at Pacific Park, sponsored by the Armenian-American Medical Association, as well as many other healthcare organizations, our hospitals, many businesses, many individuals, and representatives from the state level. And it was a very good event. A lot of opportunity for people to walk in and get a consultation with a variety of experts, from orthopedics to dietary to endocrinology to, I mean, you name it. The list goes on and on. So, it's a lot of work to organize that, and I do want to thank all the organizers for making that possible. During that event, I did come across a table that the Glendale Police Department had placed, and that was from our, I have the name wrong, but it was a substance abuse division of our Glendale Police Department. So, I've spoken to the city manager, and I would invite members of that division to come before us to counsel and explain what opportunities and resources they have to help us remain a healthy city, and in particular, help those that we may know, those family members that have substance abuse problems that really affect their quality of life. Next Monday is Veterans Day. Our, well, actually, it's the 11th. We have our Veterans Day event on Tuesday, November 11th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the Police Community Room, and we will have almost 20 different resource booths for veterans to take advantage of. So, come down to the Police Community Room on Tuesday, and there will be some speakers and some opportunities, and resources will be available to both veterans and non-veterans. And City Council will be dark. That means that the lights will be off. We will not be having a meeting on Tuesday, November 11th. This is a good time for everyone to catch up on everything that we've done in the past few weeks and perhaps look forward to some of the upcoming agenda items that we have posted. Voting centers are open until 8:00 PM tonight. There are free Beeline rides to voting centers in Glendale. In fact, there's a voting center right on the City Hall campus. Please contact glandalevotes.org for more information. And that is all I have. Mr. Galanian, anything from the city?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the next, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Madam.
Mary Najarian, I just wanted to put up the vote center locations briefly for the public. We have less than two hours left for voting. If you haven't cast your ballot, you can still do so until 8:00 PM at an in-person vote center or at a mail, at a ballot dropbox. If you haven't registered, you still can. At an in-person vote center, you will be given a provisional ballot. Again, the deadline to vote is 8:00 PM. If you drop, if, if you're mailing your ballot, it has to be postmarked by today, by November 4th. For, again, for the locations, you can vote glandalevotes.org. Here are some of the locations in Glendale. Oh, here are the locations in Glendale, but you can cast your ballot at any location in LA County or at any dropbox in LA County. We also have a vote center right here on our campus at City Hall, so.
I didn't mean to upstage you. They have these on my notes, so I'm sorry. I should have just deferred to you from the beginning, but I'm, I apologize for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next, our community event announcements. Three minutes per speaker. Members of the public will be permitted to announce upcoming events taking place in the community. We do have one speaker card on this item.
Please call them.
Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members and members of the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Tuesday is Veterans Day. We only get one day, veterans. If you're LBGQ, XYZ, you get the whole month, but we veterans only get one day to make our name be heard. I will be here for that Veterans Day event. There's also another Veterans Day event up there at Two Strikes Park, up there in Locust Center. I encourage people of the viewing audience to please attend to these veterans events. It's very meaningful. You know, only a small percentage of this country actually serve in the military, a very small percentage. And because of that, you are safe in your homes, in your apartments, in your condos. Come out and shake our hands, say thank you for your service. Now, I get that all the time, and I really appreciate that, but I never hear it enough. I spent time in Vietnam. There are some veterans who were Korean, very few World War II. We have the Iraqi war and other more current ones. So, Veterans Day, we only get one day, unfortunately. We don't get a whole month, like some people do, but we make your country yourself safe. Also, I believe that we should start somewhere, I'd like to tell this to President Trump, we should start a, a national event in which every person at the age of 18 must, must serve at least three years of their time to give community service, be it the military, volunteer at a VA hospital, but do something to give back to your country. When you complain, you young people, that, oh, life is tough, you don't know what tough is left when you, when you, when you eat in the rain. Okay, you eat dirt, and you smell dirt. You don't know what toughness is. Think about giving back. You know, the Veterans Administration is always looking for volunteers. There are veterans who need to be pushed around in wheelchairs. They can't get around. But you young people out in the viewing audience, please, please, volunteer your time. It's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate your service, Mr.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Mohill.
Thank you for your service to our country, Mr. Mohill.
Next, please.
Next is the first period of oral communications, maximum three minutes per speaker, 30-minute aggregate speaking time limit. Members of the public may address the council on agenda items or non-agenda items within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker addresses the council on an agenda item during the first period of oral communications, they may not speak again when the agenda item is called. A speaker who addresses the council on non-agenda items during the first period of oral communications may not speak during the second period of oral communications. Mary Najarian, I believe we have 11 cards. Twelve, actually. We just got one additional one.
We'll stick with the three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay. Our first speaker is Tony Passarella. Following Tony is Larry Cohen and Herbert Milano.
Good evening, council. Tony Passarella. Two victories for common sense and civic pride, a citizen's reflection on Glendale's moral compass. Tonight, for once, I don't come here to complain. Surprising, right? I come here to celebrate change, real, visible, measurable change that every pedestrian in Glendale can see and feel. First, let's talk about Bran Boulevard in front of the Carousel Restaurant, an area I've spoken about for weeks. It was an obstacle course of tables, umbrellas, and space heaters. It was a hazard to seniors, to people with disabilities, and to anyone just trying to walk safely down the sidewalk. Today, but today, finally, there is a 5-foot ADA compliant horizontal path. That's not just compliance with the code, that's compliance with basic human decency. It's proof that the public right of way actually belongs to the public. Second, Artie, this is your baby, but I accelerated, I'm pretty sure. The Kinnellworth Tunnel leading to Fremont Park. For years, it was neglected, dark, dirty, and unsafe. Now, it's been clean. Graffiti is gone. Families can walk through it again, feeling better. Kids can bike to the park without feeling like they're sneaking through a forgotten corner of the city. These two fixes may seem small to some, but to those of us who walk, who see, who live every day, they're huge. They prove that when residents care enough to speak up respectively, consistently, and backed by facts, the city can, in fact, find its moral compass. They prove, but let's, let's be honest, these victories don't come easily. They come after weeks of public pleas, after photos, videos, and a little persistence. They came because someone cared more about doing what's right than about staying quiet. So, tonight, I offer my thanks. And also a reminder, let's keep the momentum. Let's make sure every sidewalk, every tunnel, every ADA ramp in Glendale meets the same standard. Let's keep the city walkable, safe, and worthy of the people who built it, and the seniors and the disabled who still live here. Because there's, because these are small victories, they're Glendale's victories, proof that when government listens, community wins. Thank you all, whoever had a part in this. From the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Next is Larry Cohen. Following Larry is Herbert Milano and Patrick Murphy.
Thank you very much, City Council. My name is Larry Cohen. My wife and I bought our home in 1975 here in Glendale, and I'm a third-generation Angelino. And one of the things that has raised my concern is the possibility of a dedicated busway down Glen Oaks Boulevard. Our house is in that zone where the zoning could, could change because of that. Under this state, I think it's SB 79, I believe is, is the number of it, which would create a zoning in, in single-family home neighborhoods where high-rise developments could, could be built to house multiple families. where high-rise developments could be built to house multiple families. I find that a little bit alarming because I think it would change the nature of Glendale. And I value our single-family home. My home was built in 1938, and it's a very nice neighborhood that we have right near Hoover High School, so. Thank you.
Next is Herbert Milano. Following Herbert is Patrick Murphy and Mike Mohill.
I have a handout and an overhead. Council members, my name is Herbert Milano. Last week, I made a presentation to the city council with regard to three items. My concern about the budget, specifically about how the payroll has been growing at an alarming rate. Salaries increasing by 13%, overtime increasing by 28%. I mentioned as well the fact that the Civil Service Commission appears more of a performative-type organization that we've created. They're passive, procedural, and they're not paying attention to the issues of nepotism, for example, or the lawsuits that are taking place from employees filing lawsuits against the city. And third, I mentioned the fact that the Audit Committee is even more performative than these other commissions. The idea that an Audit Committee cannot initiate their own audits or even review it, it seems like they are simply a rubber stamp to what is given to them. So here's what I'm presenting. The oversight pillars, the Civil Service Commission and the Audit Committee, do not appear to be doing what they were intended to do. Next, please. May I have the next slide? And in the example of personnel Harris and nepotism, here's an example of the Glendale Police Department where you actually have about a 13% of the individuals who were hired had family members in the city of Glendale. And I did not actually calculate the number of applications that had a relative in the city of Glendale. It would give us a much better view as to the influence of insiders with regard to hiring. Next, please. Here is Community Services and Park, much higher, like roughly around 19% nepotism percentage compared to the hires. Next item, please. And then, citywide, is a 13% nepotism based upon individuals who are hired. And we should really find out of the 8,888 applications, how many of those were already with relatives in the city. Next item, please. All right, and here's the items on lawsuits. These are lawsuits, settlement awards given to employees, whistleblower lawsuits of 1.45 million, another one for 850,000, another one for 500,000. Next item, please. The documents that I'm now presenting to you, that I handed out to you, are all the source documents as well, including the city's budget that you guys approved earlier this year. What I would like to urge the city council is to look at those two commissions, the Civil Service Commission and the Audit Committee, and truly make them independent and powerful oversight committees as they should be. And maybe the charter committee should be reviewing that to really create committees that are really going to provide us with the oversight that we need. Thank you.
Question. Mr. Carpeche?
Mr. Milano, I have a quick question. You mentioned in one of your slides that it's like 13% or higher that they had relatives in the city. You mean the city of Glendale or the City Hall?
No, no.
Or in the organization or in the city? Because you said they have relatives in the city. Do you mean the organization or the city?
That's correct. I meant the city organization. Yes, correct. Thank you very much.
That makes a big difference, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr.?
May I make a comment? You know, with all due respect to Mr. Milano, you could sit down. And I know where he comes from and his intentions and everything. But, you know, nepotism is a pretty serious word. I just looked it up in the law dictionary. What is it called here? The law dictionary, that's right. Appointing unqualified relatives and friends to positions in one organization when an outsider might be better qualified. So you're assuming that anybody that's been hired who has a relative in the city government is unqualified. And I really think that is inappropriate. And I think that is disparaging to the people that are in those positions. So I would just urge you to use a different word. I know what you're trying to say, but I would urge you to use a different word than nepotism. Thank you.
Mr. Galanian?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may add to Councilmember Brodmann's comments, we do purposefully on our application forms for positions in the city ask whether the applicant has a relative in the city. The purpose of that question is to ensure that the recruiting supervisor or the panel sometimes we put together are not related to the applicant and that the applicant, once he's hired, will not be working in the department or the division or the section where the relative is already employed. It doesn't mean that we pick and choose relatives to come and work for the city. Relatives are for employees. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Well, since we're piling on, I do want to, I do want to point out that we do have some very strict regulations, and it applies to those of us on the city council. In actuality, I have a son who attended the Los Angeles Police Department Academy. He was graduated top of his class. But he is specifically prohibited from seeking employment with the City of Glendale Police Department because his knucklehead dad wants to be on city council. And this is really quite a career-diverting move for him. He's currently patrolling in other neighborhoods and other cities that he does not have the same familiarity with. He would have been a great Glendale police officer. But we do have some strict rules, and I and my family have felt the bite of those rules quite severely. Let's move to the next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Patrick Murphy. Following Patrick Murphy is Mike Mohill and J.T. Parr.
Good evening, council members. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for keeping the three minutes for the 12 people. I won't use mine. I have two issues to discuss this evening. The BRT line, and in particular Glen Oaks. We discovered that Burbank, back in 2024, and Pasadena have completed cooperative agreements with Metro. And in Burbank, the Olive Avenue stretch is now mixed use as part of that cooperative agreement. It appears from a public records request that Glendale does not have a cooperative agreement with Metro as of yet. We'd like to know why not. It is imperative that the Glen Oaks stretch is a mixed-flow lane and not exclusive. It will devastate those communities above and below Glen Oaks. Second item I wanted to talk about was the surplus land list. In one of the meetings up in Montrose regarding the land use element in the public-owned parking lots, we were told by the Community Development Director that there was a path to remove the public-owned parking lots from the surplus land list. We would like to know the status of that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Mohill. Following Mike Mohill is T.J. Parr and Chad Kroger.
Good evening, Glendale residents. My name is Mike Mohill. Mayor Najarian, I was here this afternoon, and the discussion was about the parking lot behind the Alex Theater. And I mentioned the fact that the reason city wants, you can call it lease it, I call it sell it, the parking lots anyplace in the city of Glendale. Why? We need the money. We need $34 million, and we need to find that money somewhere. Now, on your handout from the city, it said the following. It says, "210 North Maryland Avenue to ground lease the site for development that provides a financial return to the city and complies with objectives and standards of the downtown Pacific plan." And the ground lease, I understand, is for 55 years. Tell me, if that's not ownership, you tell me what it is. How did we get into this pickle in the first place, the public should ask? Well, we have progressive liberal Democrats on council, Dan Brodmann, Ellen Gossatria, Arti Kasakian, to some extent our mayor, who vote for these Green New Deals. Look at your electric rates. They're going up, up, up because of them. Next is the water rates going up, up, up. This is financial irresponsibility for these council members. Of course, they take their orders from Sacramento or Laura Freeman. They don't listen to you. They're constituents. But don't worry, folks in the viewing audience, you have a chance to get back at them. Next year is an election, and Councilman Dan Brodmann, Ellen Gossatria, and Nora Najarian are up for reelection. Now, Mr. Najarian keeps shaking his hand and says, no, 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 no. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes, yes. I can wag my finger too, Mr. Najarian.
Is that an endorsement, Mr. Mohill?
If you are going to leave, I'll take my hat off. Okay? But we have a financial problem in this city, thank you, and it's caused by our progressive liberal Democrats on council. Electric rate increases, GWP rate increases, water rate increase. It was never this way. Never. I've been in Glendale since the age of 12. And living in this city gets worse and worse. People are leaving the city. We don't have a housing problem. We have to hope people stay in Glendale rather than leave. Thank you.
Next is J.T. Parr. Following J.T. is Chad Kroger and Edmond Hagopian.
So, you guys are going to speak at the same time, or you want three minutes or six minutes?
Six minutes, please.
Thanks, council.
We're pretty cool, you know. I want you to know that, so. We're going to let you guys flow with it.
Fly us into silence. But I do appreciate that comment. What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. So today, we got to bro down with our dog, Malachi. The cat called some pretty ladies, got wisdom from Adam Ray and his agent Akuto, boosted tea at the batting cages, got some mani-pedis, and then stuffed our pants and exerted dominance. It was awesome. And you know what? I learned a lot about being a great dude along the way.
For sure. I also just want to give credit to Glendale real quick for its relatively strong homeless services center. The Glendale Continuation of Care and Essentia do a good job and provide a solid model to the rest of greater LA. Your intake, your shelter, your storage, and your rapid rehousing is really impressive, and I'm glad you guys are doing it. Without further ado, though, let's talk about the fellas. I got a really great guy here, Malachi, and he's going to spit on what it means to be a guy.
Thanks, bro. My name is Malachi. The greatest thing you'll ever learn is just to love and be loved in return. That's from Moulin Rouge. I'm here on behalf of my fellow men. I took some time to gain more perspective, and I think, you know, we all just want love. And I want to do my part for the city of Glendale that I love and hope that it'll spread far and wide. There's a male loneliness epidemic. Us bros are lonely. There's an epidemic of women being annoyed with men. The reality is, we all want the same thing. We all want love. We all want loyalty. Men and women might be wired different, but we can all enjoy similar things. I think at the end of the day, it's important to be more positive and spread more positivity. Putting us against each other leads to more division. We can all enjoy mani-pedis. We can all enjoy hitting a baseball around or enjoying one of the many hikes in LA. You might have been hurt in past relationships. Just because your ex was disloyal, lazy, broke, or secretly sold your feet pics on OnlyFans doesn't mean there's only disappointment ahead. Those that are hurt, hurt others. So let's all be positive, heal, and love each other. Bros for life.
Malachi, 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 malachi. Malachi. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Edmond Hagopian. Following Edmond is Kate Unger and Antonek Saturian.
Good evening, council members. My name is Edmond Hagopian, and I wanted to bring several things to your attention. For the past several meetings, I've been asking you to agendize the BRT and provide a fact sheet for the community to know what's going to happen to our city if this BRT comes through, given the SB 79 passage that has not been agendized or it hasn't been reflected anywhere. The problem with this is the residents want to take position and do their own advocacy. Dr. Alex Belikian, at one of the council meetings, he provided a fact sheet. And then immediately after that, Mr. Alec Waltersoff stood up and said, that's misinformation. If you're the gold standard source of information, then why are you holding this information back? How many times do we need to ask for it? So please agendize it. This is going to make people feel more relaxed, and we deserve to know what's going to happen to our city if this project goes through. The second one, I want to ask, I know you guys wanted to take a break and decrease the number of items. I'm adding more to them. Sorry about that. So I want to ask you to agendize cost reduction and revenue generation report. The budget problems are there. I appreciate you trying to work on construction projects. But you know that's not going to fix all the problems, and we need the community to know what's going on with that one. That hasn't been agendized as well. Also, as I shared the same concern that Mr. Milano shared, I think when concerned residents are coming here and they are telling you about risks that they are seeing within our operation of our city, it's not fair to scold them as an individual. And you guys picked on his comment on nepotism. He meant the risk of nepotism. If there's a higher percentage, it's a valid point for residents to ask you to look into that. That doesn't mean there is actual nepotism. And then I also wanted to ask you to hold whoever who's been responsible for deferred maintenance in GWP accountable. I was listening to the report yesterday, and 60% of our infrastructure requires maintenance, and that would be $35 million a year going forward. And that's going to increase the water rates. I would like to know who made the decision to defer maintenance on this infrastructure? Because every time you defer it, you are not moving 10 million out for the next year. You are actually increasing the cost in the future. So I would appreciate you commenting on any of those. Thank you.
Next is Kate Unger. Following Kate is Antonek Saturian and Rami.
Hello, Mayor Najarian, members of city council and staff. I'm going to try to keep this very short since you have a lot of speakers. And I just wanted to talk about a couple of events that I went to recently. Open houses that were presented by city staff. The first was for the San Fernando Road Beautification Project on the 20th of October. And the second was on October 29th, the Glendale Water Master Plan Open House. It's great to be on the email list. You get notification of these. It would be nice, of course, to be able to reach out to people more broadly. But I did want to commend staff for both really good opportunities to understand what's going on with these projects. For the San Fernando Road Beautification Project, one note, I talked to somebody else there that said a sort of negative thing, that they thought that by the time the public is being presented the project, it's already baked, and there's no room to be able to make changes. I certainly hope and believe that's not the case, and I'm looking forward to giving further input on that. And then for the Water Master Plan, I wanted to particularly commend the Assistant General Manager, Chizem Obagolu, because he stopped and took time to go back over his presentation when my husband and I got there late and was obviously very dedicated, recognizing, and it's interesting, the past speaker mentioned this, deferred maintenance in the past, perhaps part of the reason why rates have been artificially low, and now that's catching up to us, and we're going to have to address it. But I really appreciate his proactive and forward-thinking approach. And again, thanks to all staff for both of those events. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Antonek Saturian, and following Antonek is- And following Antanik is Rami and Dennis Fitoza.
Hello, my name is Antanik Zaturian. I have applied to receive Section 8 since 2001. During these 25 years, a lot of people have already received it and still are receiving. I spoke to you a few times. You told me that you will call me back, but nobody has called me back. I'm over 80 years old. Whatever pension I receive, it's barely enough for the rent. I supposedly received-- I supposedly received an apartment on the newly built building on Broadway for low-income renters. But it's not for low-income renters. It's I pay $2,000 rent, and then every year, they raise it by $150. If it continues this way, in about four or five years, it'll be $4,000. I'm asking you, if possible, to do something regarding this Section 8 situation. Thank you.
Mr. Galanian, has anyone reached out to this gentleman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have been informed that Mr. Zaturian has been contacted by staff.
I mean, he's discussing two different programs. One is the Section 8. One is the Affordable that we jointly develop. If they could reach out again and get an update on this.
Will do.
Can we also please get an update just so we're-- whatever the conversation may be for us to receive a part-- thank you.
And I think we get updates through the Housing Authority as well on the general status of Section 8 and affordable. If we can put that on the-- I don't think we need to vote on that, but I'm sure there's a-- we have regular updates if we could address those issues when it comes to--
And when the reports come back for Housing Authority sessions, can you provide the rental-- the rents for the newly developed projects as well as the older ones that we have? Because we hear different numbers, and I want to make sure that we have the right numbers.
Thank you.
Next is Rami. Following Rami is Dennis Fitoza. And we have two callers.
Good evening, Council. Yeah, as everybody knows by now, last Tuesday, Burbank Council passed 4% rent cap, which is equivalent to 7% rent cap in the city of Glendale. And yeah, instead of going all over-- young families, seniors are rent burdened. And we need-- we need stronger rent protection in the city of Glendale. So this group of people, seniors and young families could stay. Could stay in the city. Yeah, seniors like Mr. Antanik that got like 8% rent increase for the building that is supposed to be affordable housing. Yeah, these people are rent burdened. We need stronger rent protection for the city. Yeah, actually, Mr. Antanik's rent is like 8.8% rent increase. And it is outrageous. So we need rent cap of like 3%, 4% for the city of Glendale. We're gonna get that, I'm pretty sure. We're there. So-- yeah, so yeah, we want young families to stay in the city. In this-- and-- yeah. And we want this for affordable housing units, too. Yeah, there's supposed to be affordable, but the 8.8% increase for affordable housing projects, it's outrageous. And yeah, we gotta get that, I'm pretty sure. So, yeah, Mr. Broadman, I'm pretty sure that you cannot imagine these young families, seniors, are going through month after month paying for these high rents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Dennis Fitoza.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Fitoza, and I'm here tonight to oppose what's currently happening in Glendale. SB 79, signed by Governor Newsom just a few weeks ago, and AB 2097, authored by then-Assembly member Laura Friedman, are not just housing bills. They're part of a coordinated strategy to strip local control, erase property rights, and centralize power in Sacramento. AB 2097 eliminated parking requirements near transit stops. SB 79 builds on that by allowing seven-story, high-density housing along BRT corridors, including the one planned through Glendale. Together, these laws override local zoning, remove parking, and force density into neighborhoods never designed to handle it. Democrats in Sacramento call this affordable housing, but the results are predictable. Crowded streets, strained infrastructure, disappearing parking, and failing-- falling property values for people who've built their lives here. For residents, this isn't reform. It's just regulation by decree. These bills also raise serious constitutional concerns. When the state forces property owners to shoulder public burdens, that being traffic congestion, infrastructure costs, and lost property value without fair compensation, it clearly violates the Fifth Amendment's Takings Clause. When it overrides local due process, zoning hearings, and community consent, it undermines the Fourteenth Amendment's due process protections. This isn't housing reform. It's just quiet dismantling of property rights. And worse, it mirrors centralized authoritarian planning. Let's just call this for what it is. It's Soviet-style central planning dressed up as compassion. It treats neighborhoods as bureaucratic grids, not living communities. For many Glendale families, especially those who escaped old Soviet republics, it's not a hyperbole. It's a warning. They know how quickly freedom erodes when the state seizes control of land and housing. I live in Hollywood. I've seen firsthand what this kind of density creates. No parking, overcrowded streets, rising rents, and collapsing quality of life. That's what AB 2097 unleashed. And SB 79 will export to places like Glendale and Burbank. Don't let Sacramento turn Glendale into Hollywood, or worse, San Francisco. Protect local control. Defend property rights. And I just want to say, this is part of the reason why I'm running for Congress, to fight these top-down abuses of power and restore respect for property rights, local control, and due process. Thank you.
We have two callers. Melissa Y., you're on air. You have three minutes. Melissa Y.? Go ahead.
Hi, hi, council members. My name is Melissa Yu with the Sierra Club, and we represent more than 4,300 members and supporters here in Glendale. I'm calling in to support item 9B regarding local amendments to California Building and Energy Code. I want to thank the council for looking at ways to make homes cleaner, safer, and more affordable to heat and cool. Energy costs are already high, and they're expecting to rise even more. Analysis suggests the price of gas prices could double next year, which will drive up both gas and electricity prices. Families shouldn't be stuck paying higher rates because utilities keep investing in outdated, central fossil fuel infrastructure. That's why making it easier and more affordable for residents to choose clean, efficient technologies like heat pumps is so important right now. But heat pump costs about $2,000 more upfront than a conventional air conditioner. But we base some-- like, we base some local, state, and federal programs can really help to cover that difference. And in addition to that, once installed, heat pumps are more efficient, so they can save money over time. They're also a smart financial move because if heat pumps provide both heating and cooling, their homeowners don't have to pay for furnace replacement later on when that breaks as well. Unfortunately, too often contractors really don't mention this option, and these people walk into higher future expenses. So Glendale policy can really be-- take the lead on changing that, helping residents save money now and in the long run while keeping more energy dollars local. So thank you for your leadership on this. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our final caller is Ella. Ella, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Hello, my name is Ella, and I'm here to share my concern regarding some of the recent comments made by Mr. Mike Mohal. I believe many of us would appreciate if the discussion and remarks shared in this meeting remained respectful and appropriate. If anyone has any personal concerns, those can be always addressed privately with council members. However, making public statements that are negative or unfounded does not contribute to constructive conversation. These meetings are watched by families and children as well, so it is important to maintain a tone that reflects the community's value. And I also want to say thank you to Dan Broadman and Helen Gossatria for everything they do. And please do not personalize anything you hear from some people. Thank you. That's all I wanted to share.
And that is all.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That will end this portion of oral communications. And let's move on to the next.
Next is Adoption of Ordinances. Item A, Community Development Regarding Ordinance Adopting 2026 Glendale Building and Safety Code. One, An Ordinance of the Council of Glendale, California Adopting the 2025 California Building Code as Volume 1A, the 2025 California Residential Code as Volume 1B, the 2025 California Existing Building Code as Volume 1C, the 2025 California Plumbing Code as Volume 2, the 2026 California Mechanical Code as Volume 3, the 2025 California Electrical Code as Volume 4, the 1997 Uniform Housing Code as Volume 5, the 2025 California Fire Code as Volume 6, the Glendale Security Code as Volume 7, and the Glendale Commercial Industrial Property Maintenance Code as Volume 8, and the 2025 California Green Building Standards Code as Volume 9, all of which comprise the Building and Safety Code of the City of Glendale 2026.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Member of City Council. This item was before you, and Councilmember Broadman introduced the ordinance. Our building official, Mr. Garcia, is available if you have any questions.
Are there any cards?
There are no cards on this item.
Are there any comments or questions first or comments? Mr.--
Comment. I have a comment, maybe a question. I'm gonna raise this issue right now, so maybe you can address it now or when item 9B comes to play. This is the Building Code 2026-- Building and Safety Code, right, that we're adopting right now. So in item 9B, page 2, it refers to this building code. And it says the proposed ordinance-- this is 9B ordinance, which is after this item-- incorporates necessary findings for adoption of local amendments to the newly adopted 2026 Building and Safety Code. This-- this code, this ordinance, has not been adopted yet, but it's being referred to as newly adopted in an item, which is like two items next to item. I would like to know either now or when that item comes by, 9B, when we discuss that item, as to how is it being framed this way? Because if this Building and Safety Code has not been adopted yet, the ordinance was introduced last week. Did we know how the votes are gonna go? How is it that it's being referred as newly adopted in the 9B? Item 9B.
Mr. Garcia.
I think actually it'd be appropriate to address it when 9B comes up. We're happy to address it, but it's probably better so that the record's clear on that, since the question pertains to that ordinance.
Oh, you have to wait for the answer on that.
That's why I said I wanted to ask, because last week I asked, is this-- does this have anything to do with the Reach Code? They said, no, it has nothing to do with it. But yet, it's being referred in the other one. So that's fine.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Broadman, would you like to make the motion?
Excuse me. I'll move to adopt the ordinance.
Our second?
Our second.
We'll call, please.
Councilmembers, Zaturian?
Yes.
Broadman?
Yes.
Barpetian?
Yes.
Casacian?
Yes.
Yes. Next item.
Next are action items. Action Item A, City Attorney Regarding Status Update on the Activities of the Charter Review Committee pertaining to Council Districts, Directly-Elected Mayor, Council Compensation, and Miscellaneous Matters Continued from September 30, 2025 Council Meeting. One motion providing direction.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, City Council. Mr. Garcia, our city attorney, will present this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as we get the slide presentation up-- let me see if I can-- yeah. Okay. All right. So in-- Commencing in 2023, the City Council began studying changes to the city's governance structure, including a potential change or transition to a bi-district election system and a directly-elected mayor. Changes to the council's salary structure and modernization of the charter provisions governing the city's civil service system. Council established the Charter Review Committee in 2024 and appointed 12 members to that committee and directed that it study changes committee, and directed that it study changes to the charter placing prior review on the five items listed here that I just discussed. So in, I'll go through each item, each of the areas in order. So after a significant amount of discussion, starting at the beginning of this year in January, and getting an overlay of our governance structure and some of the federal and state laws governing, governing voting, and having a detailed discussion regarding council districts and a directly elected mayor and an expanded city council. Initially, in April, the committee had a vote, a 5-5 tie vote, on a motion to transition to recommend a charter amendment that would transition us to a bi-district directly elected mayor system. After getting a full contingent of the committee available for the August of 2025 meeting, the committee had another discussion and vote, and the, the vote was to recommend that the council not place a charter amendment on the ballot that would transition us from our at-large system to council districts and a directly elected mayor. Some of the reasons that we've outlined in more detail in the report related to the committee's recommendation was they felt that having districts would lead to diminished city accountability for council members, would lead to proclamism and division, and majority of the committee didn't see how districts will, will address the city's key challenges. In addition, you know, the, the folks that were supportive of transitioning felt that the transition would, would give folks a fair, more opportunities to seek election due to lower costs and smaller constituencies, and ensure fair representation across different areas and interests of the city, for example, South Glendale and the Renner community. So with respect to, given that the committee did not, or was recommending basically preserving the status quo in terms of that part of the governance structure, you know, districts versus at-large and, and directly elected mayor, they were asked whether they wanted to make a recommendation on what the, the role of directly elected mayor should be, or what, how many districts we should expand to, and after a discussion, the committee decided to table that discussion, not make a recommendation on the basis that, given that the majority of them felt that we shouldn't make the change, they did not feel comfortable making a recommendation on what those, what those duties should be. With respect to council compensation, so the committee was presented all of the materials that the council saw in '23 and '24 regarding the different models for salaries for, for city council. And ultimately, after, after a couple of meetings of debate on how this should be structured, where they landed was a, a recommendation, and the slide's actually the actual language that they're recommending, but in essence, it is recommending an amendment to the charter that would require the city council every two years to have a public discussion at a meeting, and whether, and, and to decide whether and to the extent to which the council salary should be modified in accordance with the state law provisions, which are already incorporated into our city charter. It would require findings if the council made a change, and the rationale for that was the, the, at the end of the day, I think the committee felt that there's a mechanism in the charter to adjust salaries in accordance with state law. There's still a gap between where we're, the council currently is in terms of council salary, what state law would provide, and so utilizing the, the current state law provisions, our charter, and this new provision, it would assure that the city council would, at least every two years, have that discussion, noting that it's been since, I believe, 2013, since the last change was made, and the council has not had that discussion. Some other issues that were addressed, the, the committee took some smaller items as part of this, because this was presented to them, it had been presented to council in '23, '24, and the committee took it up as well. There's a recommendation regarding our location of a council meeting, so you may recall that currently the charter prohibits city council meetings from occurring outside the chambers where, where the council is going to take action. So we have our city hall in your neighborhoods or council neighborhoods, that's permitted because they're basically study sessions where we hear specific items and, and feedback from the public's provided, but no, no action can be taken. So what the committee recommended was to keep the regular meetings in council chambers, but if the council ever found the need due to some unique project or circumstance where they wanted to have a special meeting in a location off-site, but within the city of Glendale, they could do so by holding a special meeting, and they would even be permitted to take action. The other amendments pertain to removing some obsolete job titles in the, that are in the charter, director of administrative services, maintenance services administrator, and the city assessor. And then last of these minor, more minor amendments, there is a provision in the charter currently which prohibits council members from holding compensated city office or employment while they're on council and for a two-year period after they come off of council. There's been public debate and even litigation whether that provision pertains to the elected clerk, elected treasurer positions, or somebody who's appointed to a council seat after they come off, off the council. And you might remember, there was litigation, some of you might remember, there was litigation challenging Mr. Quintero's appointment to council after he had stepped off. So this basically, the answer to that question is, no, it doesn't apply, but this, this charter amendment is basically cleaning that up and making sure that it's very clear so it won't be, there will not be debate on it in the future. Some additional issues that the committee will be addressing, the first item pertains to the city, city's civil service system, which the council has directed the committee or asked the committee to look at. The committee's currently in the middle of that process, they received the presentation at the last meeting on the first three items, is receiving another update on an additional three items at this week's meeting, and we hope to get some direction on, from them at the December meeting on these items. The committee has asked to have a discussion about making the city treasurer position appointed, or alternatively, and previous to that request, there was a quest, a request to look at the qualifications for the elected treasurer. So currently, the only requirement is that you be a resident elector. There's also a provision, there's also requests to have a discussion about making the city attorney position elected, and then there's a minor provision, minor request to look at the, making the, some of the terms in the, in the charter refer to the masculine and making those terms gender neutral. And then you might, some of you might remember from a few years ago, there was discussion about cleaning up some of our antiquated provisions in the charter regarding the, the city's finance and budget system. Not sure whether that's going to come back, but that was, that was, that's one of the outstanding items that the committee may discuss. So just a couple of issues regarding to the timing of when, if the council puts any or all of these issues on the ballot for consideration. State law governs when they can be, when charter amendments can be posed, posed to the voters. So as it pertains to the civil service system, there's a state law provision adopted over the last 10 years that says, "Any provision that alters any procedural or substantive right, protection, benefit, or employment status of any local government employee must occur at the statewide election." So must occur at the November election, 2026, 2028. So that would apply, in our view, we looked at it, that would apply to the civil service amendments. Any other charter amendments would either have to occur at our general municipal election or the statewide primary, which is the same election, or could it also occur at the statewide general election? So we, these are, this is basically a summary, this is kind of where we're at, we're, we're asking for feedback. As it pertains to district or directly elected mayor, the council could accept the committee's recommendation, and, and to maintain the status quo, no further action would be, would be required. It could reject the committee's recommendation, direct staff to proceed with preparing charter language, and whatever additional public outreach might be required to place a charter amendment dealing to, to transition to council districts and a directly elected mayor. It could reject it and refer back to the committee. I would just note that, you know, again, I, I think the committee overall expressed strong opinion of not being put in that position of asked to provide additional feedback on what the, what the role of the directly elected mayor should be, or how many districts should, should be if the council's inclined to go in that direction. With respect to council compensation, the, the council, again, can accept the committee's recommendation to amend the charter to basically just essentially require that every two-year check-in, or could provide alternate direction. And I do have additional information I could provide on the models that the council previously discussed related to council compensation, and, and if the council asks questions in that regard. Some additional matters, obviously, the, the additional matters that the committee's looking at, that I, that I showed, as well as the, the three more minor, finite charter amendments that, that I discussed pertaining to location of council meetings, job titles, and, and compensation after service. And then finally, if the council's inclined to give us direction on any of these charter amendments, we would like to know if the council's inclined to want to have them heard at the June and November 2026 election. I would note, for the June election, we are, it's getting really, really close, we're in November, the, everything has to be finalized, approved by council by March 3. So that's about four months away. Or, and then to put the November 20, put the charter, civil service amendments on the November 2026 election, or the council can choose to put all, whatever charter amendments it wants at the November 2026 election, which, all that would have to be buttoned up by the first week of August. And then we'll take whatever, any other direction the council chooses to provide. So I'll leave this slide up, so you can see kind of what the, the checkpoints are we want. Happy to answer any questions, provide additional information as, as you would like, like to hear.
Okay, thank you. We do have some callers, but would council like to put any questions first before callers or, or speakers?
I'm, I'm happy listening to the public and the callers first, and then I'll have some questions.
All right, let's go to the public, please.
Mayor Najarian, we have five speaker cards and one caller. Our first speaker is Herbert Milano, following Herbert is Mike Mohell and Edmond Hagoian.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. It has been 22 years since the last time we had a charter review committee. This is not something that happens very often, and it is for that reason that I wanted this charter committee to take on some real serious issues pertaining to the governance of the city of Glendale. Many of the issues are not what I would call the serious issues, like the placement of where the city council meetings might be. The serious issues are the type of, of elections we're, we're going to have, for example, or the length of, of time that a council member could remain in office. But I've been bringing it to you for the last couple of weeks, the issues of the civil service and the audit committee, that I think are serious enough for it to pertain, for this committee to review. Unfortunately, out of the many meetings that I've attended and presented my views, we have a chair that never participated in any type of city committee, nor, nor housing association, nor anything. He just simply appeared, and he became a chair, and then after finding out that this gentleman was already a city attorney for several other cities in California. So I figure out, okay, I'll do some statistical analysis of this. The probability of someone who doesn't participate in the city of Glendale comes in to one of these committees, that happens once every 20 years, and is a city attorney living in the city of Glendale, one out of whatever, 90,000 adults, is approximately one in 1.2 million. That is the probability of someone just by chance appearing at that committee and becoming chair. And the behavior of this gentleman, Mr. Flowers, is one in which he has not taken up any recommendations to bring up experts, real true experts that are independent and can bring points of view. He continually tried to push for the districting despite the committee making decisions that they did not want this to go any further. In other words, in my opinion, it is biased, and in my opinion, this is a plant. This Mr. Flower is a plant in this committee. We need an independent individual, and we need to have the issues of the audit committee and the issues of the civil service commission be placed before this charter review committee so that this city can have the type of accountability that it, that it needs. Thank you very much.
Mr. Milano, may I ask a question? What was that probability that you calculated?
One in 1.2 million.
And what was, how did you come up with that figure?
You basically do a Bayesian statistical analysis.
I understand the word statistics. How did you come up with that?
No, no, it's probability. Yeah, you basically take your priors, which is your, the probability of someone, a single adult, coming into this committee who is a, let's say, an active member, you take that probability, and then you multiply that times the other probabilities with regard to being an attorney, and then being a, an attorney in practice as a, as a, as a city attorney in other, in other venues.
Was the person's work history or application not mentioning that he was an attorney, or that he had done this type of work?
He doesn't, that's how I got the information.
So you did look at his application, which stated that was his employment, that's what he does for a living, which could possibly be one of the reasons why we considered putting him on a committee that is addressing city issues, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Absolutely. All right. And was there not a democratic, open process in which the committee members had nominees? And then, I, I mean, I watched the meeting, I saw that there were multiple nominees for chair, and they voted. No one was, you know, the council wasn't in a bug in their ear saying, how is it not true?
There were, there were only two. One was the previous police chief.
But that wasn't my case, that, my question, I said there were multiple, there was more than one nominee, it wasn't like he was unilaterally.
No, there were just those two.
That's more than one.
Well, he said.
It was going to be either the police chief or this particular gentleman. And I can actually write down the, the analysis for you. The likelihood that he was met at the association.
Mr. Milano, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
At the Association of City Attorneys, which are only about 200 to 300, that's likely where he was found.
Okay.
I'm just pointing it out.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Mike Mohell. Following Mike is Edmond Hagoian and Beth Brooks.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohell. Council districts. You know, years ago, I was for having council districts, not based on, not based on population, but based on location. I felt people who lived in, where I live in Glennos Canyon were different than people in South Glendale. But the laws have changed, and I've come to the conclusion that I think the present system is the best at large. It's easier. As far as electing a mayor, what we've had over the last two years is terrible, terrible, terrible. We need a regular process. We don't need someone like an Ellen Asatana, "I want to be mayor, it's my turn." I don't want that to happen again. We should have a rotated mayor like we, and that person should be one year, and we know it, like it's always been. We should have set procedures, so there are no surprises that it's my turn, and then it's somebody else, I jump the shark. I also believe that we should have an elected city attorney. And I'll do respect to Mr. Garcia, who is appointed, he is the, he is your attorney, but he's not my attorney, the people. We think differently on issues. And you think an elected city attorney would think differently than Mr. Garcia, who's your attorney? Now finally, I want to talk about the city clerk's position. I always thought that being the city clerk was good. I talked with councilman at the time, city clerk, Articasaga, about being elected or an appointed position. He said elected was the best, Mike, and I agree to it. I let him go with that. But today we have a city clerk who's into politics. She's more into politi, she wants to run for a higher office. Wherever you see her, there's politics going on in the city, you're going to find her there. When Armajania was the city clerk, you never saw him running around trying to get elected or something. It should be suppressed. She has an agenda. She talks about those Indians every time she was the city clerk and gave the announcement. I think we should now make that no longer elected, but in appointed position, appointed by the council. So we take the politics out of that position. Thank you very much.
Edmond Hagoian. Following Edmond is Beth Brooks and Denise Miller.
Thank you. Council members, I really.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Before, before you start, I'm, I'm getting texts from people that they're trying to call in, and they're told that you can't participate, and they've been on hold, and then, so can you guys check, look into it and see, let, let people speak?
Well, we have a policy on that. I think it's after the first speaker has.
After the end of the staff, the staff report?
After the end of the staff report.
Not everyone knows that policy. I mean, average people don't know those policies. I don't know how many speakers do we have on this item, but I don't think it's a right thing to not to let one or two people speak.
Well, it was agendized, yeah. They had a chance to call in. Let's continue. I mean, I would be inclined not to, not to take more speakers at this point.
This is ridiculous.
Starting again. Hello, council members. I would really encourage you to watch the Charter Review Committee meeting, that when the committee members were discussing the districting, and then the following meeting that Mr. Garcia and Chair Flower, on their own, brought, put the agenda item to reconsider the districting again on the agenda. One of the committee members, they have the right, I'm, I'm just giving you an example how bad these meetings are run, when Mr. Garcia and Chair Flower, from my perspective, are running the meetings. You should watch it and be the judge yourself. A committee member wanted to pull that item off because they've already exhausted all the discussions on it. Chair Flower simply, and Mr. Garcia just sitting there, Chair Flower said, "We'll address it later." When the time came, the entire, the, all the committee members, all the gallery members, which were like four people, and all the callers, I would say around maybe six, everyone commented on Chair Flower and his conduct. That created a commotion, and then when you are sitting in a meeting, it, it gives you a, like a bad feeling already on something that should be, something very easy to take care of. The next item was the compensation of the council members. And then, based on the emotional, you know, stress of the previous agenda items, I know for a fact two of the committee members were considering increasing the pay for the council members, and then they end up getting confused and they voted, voted differently, okay? These meetings, it's, and it's not just the Charter Review Committee meeting, you can watch the Audit Committee as well. It wasn't Mr. Garcia, it was Lucy Vartanian, if I'm not mistaken, council staff. She was also trying to kind of keep the, keep, isolate. She was also trying to kind of keep the, isolate the conversation and not allow committee members to put stuff on the agenda and have a discussion. Charter Review Committee, Audit Committee, these are auxiliaries. These are people that you trust, you put in there so they can bring the committee input and help you and guide you through these decisions. However, based on what I saw, and I'm encouraging you to go watch it yourself, Mr. Garcia and the city attorney, also at the Audit Committee, they are pushing their own agenda. That's how I'm going to phrase it. And I think you should coach them or give them direction, force them to accommodate conversation rather than pushing their agenda. Thank you.
Next is Beth Brooks.
You come back for a second. I'm sorry.
Did the committee members attempt to override the chair?
Later on, yes, that happened. They removed, they had a discussion, and they moved not to vote on the agenda item, but initially, they wanted to take it off of the agenda, which that didn't happen.
Mr. Garcia, were they given instructions on the, like, if, so for example, if the chair of any meeting wants to move forward in one way, rules are that if you get three votes, then you can override that.
More than three votes for the chair, yeah.
Right, majority.
We're going to be here all day if I have to debate every one of Mr. Hagopian's points from what happened at those meetings.
No, I recognize that.
But, yeah, so I'm trying, you know, I don't think it's a fair characterization what happened. That's what I'm trying to say. So, yeah, I don't think anybody felt like they, the discussion has been very cordial, even when there are disagreements. And I think this discussion about whether or not to have a discussion about the sort of recommendations on the charter, whether to go to districts and whatnot, it was a follow-up discussion. I think there was one point a motion was made, and I think in particular case, the chair asked to just let everybody speak before the motion was made, and I think that's where there's some issue of disagreement. But, again, I did, no, I don't think anybody, I was never told, I was never told privately or publicly, that any member felt like they couldn't make a motion, or they couldn't speak their opinion on a particular issue.
I think my question was more to, were the committee members provided the rules? More procedural rules? Were they provided the procedural rules because you have.
Sure.
Committee members, like, that maybe haven't gone through any orientation, don't know how the proceedings go, and so if a chair says something, they think that that's bad because they don't know any better?
We provided them information on the Brown Act. I can't remember how, to the extent we provided them information on our Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, but we try, you know, we both, our staff, you know, Mr. Tuktalian, who was staffing, and the chair, tried to make sure, we were very deliberate, making sure everybody had opportunity to speak and address whatever concern they had. And anytime there was a motion, that, and there would be questions, like, what is this motion? What are we doing with this motion? We took effort to explain what the motion was doing and not doing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Garpetian? Yeah. I watched those meetings as well. Mr. Hagopian is absolutely right. The problem was, when they decided on to go for or against districting, they were presented by this idea to choose district, number of districts, the maps and everything. The members said, "We do not want to go to this shop. We just voted against it. How can we choose a map?" And in short period of time, there's no way you can do that. And they were said, "No, more discussion, and more discussion." And that's when they got frustrated and said, "We don't want to do this." And overruled, I don't know, overruled or what have you, they took that item off the agenda. And also, there was few occasions that there was a motion and a second, where you take a roll call. After everybody spoke for weeks, discussed this issue for weeks, and then a motion and a second, "No, let's not take a vote. Let's discuss it more, and let's discuss it." Motion and a second, take a vote, and it doesn't pass, you can discuss more. It wasn't that some board members, committee members, didn't have a choice or chance to speak. It was just they spoke so many times, they were frustrated, they wanted to take a vote, but somehow, they were being directed to keep deliberating and keep the, it's like the old, what do they call it, the communists, they keep voting on it until you get the results you want. So it's, that's what, and I was frustrated. I was almost ready to make a phone call, but I didn't, because I saw what Mr. Mayor did with the TPC one day. And it's just frustrating. Let me, let me.
So let me just, let me just interject, and I think we can acknowledge that those meetings could have been run a little differently, with a little more procedural understanding. But that's really not the point before us now. The point is that there was a recommendation made. As far as I have heard, the recommendations act, the recommendation accurately reflects what the committee desired. So I think to go back and say it was, it was a conspiracy to place Mr. Flower at there, or the odds were so high, or that he had his own agenda, I'm not saying it was a perfectly run committee, but what we have before us today is the recommendation that I understand accurately reflects the committee's desires, and in particular, for the districts, it was the seven to five vote. And there were no maps or many, or any other discussion of districts ultimately presenting, being presented to us at this time. So let's move forward if we can. I mean, there might be some cleanup that we can do for future meetings, but I don't think we should get sidetracked on the process, but focus on what the ultimate results were and the recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right. I never said there was a conspiracy. What I'm saying, I, when I mentioned, when I discussed these issues, because they still have a long way to go, they have so many other items that they have to, you know, discuss and everything, so we have to clean it up. That's all.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you for raising that. Next, next speaker.
Next speaker is Beth Brooks. Following Beth Brooks is Denise Miller.
Ms. Brooks, yes.
Hi. I also was at the Charter Review Committees, and Edmond is absolutely correct, and so was Mr. Garpetian. But be that as it may, what I want to talk about is your compensation, because whether I agree with you or not, this is a, you work very, very hard. This is a very hard job. This is a very time-consuming job. And I think that you have to be appropriately compensated. I think you have to have the, you know, the area median income. I really, I really do. I don't see that you can go forward making, you know, $1,400 a month, or even at the state cap, it's like $2,500 a month. That's crazy. That's ridiculous. I believe you need dedicated staff yesterday, and I believe that you need, you know, proper compensation. It cannot be that you have, you know, a city manager who makes $400,000, and you make $1,400 a month. Sorry, that's not, that doesn't make sense in any, in any world. So I think that, you know, they didn't really want to touch that. It was very, very, they were going into minutia, and what are the benefits? But really, I think you, you absolutely need to be compensated. I think you should discuss that seriously, or that it even goes onto a ballot. I also think that that would take care of the situation where people feel they're not represented, because they often feel that you represent, not so much, you know, Mrs. Asatran, but that you represent people who have money, you know, who just do this part-time, and you don't need the money, and it's no big deal. This way, you can at least get people who take a sabbatical from being a teacher, or they're, you know, they're a blue-collar person, they're, you know, that they could actually say, "I want to serve this city, but I also need to feed my family and pay my mortgage and pay my rent." I think this is, should be one of your biggest, biggest items, that you are properly compensated. This is, I'm looking at these reports that are 20 pages, 50 pages, 500 pages. I mean, you cannot do this. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair at all, whether, you know, I think that has to stop. I think you have to take a stand and give yourselves what you deserve and what, you know, future council members deserve, because this should be taken more seriously. And I think that the people doing it maybe take it more seriously, instead of saying, "Oh, my God, I'm only getting $1,400," and I don't want to read this $200. I wouldn't want to do it, $1,400. I mean, do you see what I'm saying? You deserve much more, and you deserve definitely the area median income, at a minimum, which is $106,000 for a four-person family. You absolutely deserve that. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Denise Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, city staff, and council. First off, I want to start here. I am on the committee, and I want to thank you for appointing me to be on this committee and to let you know what an honor and a privilege it is to serve our community in this way. And I believe all 11 other of my colleagues feel the same way. I'm only speaking tonight. I hadn't planned on it, but I have now decided to speak because I want you to understand the lived experience. The no vote was not because we took it lightly, or because we were uncomfortable, or because we didn't get it. The no vote was because we don't think it's right for the city right now. Now, different versions of us had different no's. You can watch the tapes, and you can see where we were at on that no. But specifically, we spent one-third of our time, we spent 40 hours, we deliberated. You appointed very thoughtful people who deliberated every point on this topic to come up with a no. At different times, we were yes, at different times, we were no. But we, no stone was unturned here through our process as we came to a no. So it's not that we're uncomfortable. The no vote is because this committee, after hours and days and months of deliberating on every topic, came up with the suggestions we came up with because of all of the discussions that we had. And we hope that you consider that as you deliberate further on this, and we recognize we're at the service of the council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes.
That concludes the public comments.
Let's go to council questions, and then move into comments. So, Mr. Garcia, just so we're clear, you'd like us to touch on, you're looking for council direction.
Correct.
And it is looking at the motion. Council districts.
And so basically, what I have up on the slide on these items.
Districts, compensation, meetings, meeting location.
And timing.
There's no one else.
No other speakers. Okay, so if you could, as you make your comments, if you could make sure you touch on those. Yeah, questions, and then comment.
The charter recommendation, was that separated out from the elected mayor?
No, it was one, it was one decision. I think the committee felt, in fact, they spoke to, the whether to go to districts was sort of the driving issue, and then having an elected mayor wouldn't make sense unless you were going to have council districts. So they felt it was sort of, they viewed it as one thing, although, you know, they understood it could be separate, but they viewed it as, that it wouldn't make sense to have a directly elected mayor if you're not going to have council districts.
And then the civil service processes, you guys just started that conversation, or, I'm sorry.
No, correct, yeah, in October. We started, and we have another discussion this month, which is this Thursday, and then another discussion December, the first, the first meeting in December.
Does that mean that HR has had conversations with our associations already? Because I think that was one of the holdups you guys had noted previously.
We, the HR has commenced those meet and confer discussions. They're early, because we, they're still in the process of getting feedback from the, from the committee, but that's, that'll be an ongoing process that occurs as we get direction from the committee and the council. But we, the HR staff has commenced that process.
So I had raised the civil service process at this point, about three years ago. Some of the key points that I had made at the time, that I really wanted to make sure that the committee was looking at, included the concept of the, what you would call a promotion, or available promotion within city government, where someone doesn't necessarily have the skill sets for a position, but they're next in line, and they're part of this pool of individuals that could. And then, the second part was really accountability measures when it comes to hiring and letting go of employees. I don't know how thoroughly these things are going to be discussed in the Charter Review Committee, or is that something that's going to be happening with associations? You know, as an example to the public, one of the things that I had learned that kind of was mind-boggling to me was, you know, if there was an employee that was reprimanded, and there was enough reports made, that you couldn't actually let go of the employee, that employee had to have, be given two other chances in other departments before you can actually let them go, even though they're on taxpayers' money, and so, these are, like, these are very detailed things that I'm bringing up. And so, I'm trying to understand how that conversation around the civil service process and the charter is going to be handled through the committee.
Let me try to address globally. So, the civil service rules are approved by the Civil Service Commission and the City Council. There are a lot, a lot of the functionality of how our system works are in those rules. The reason why it's a discussion point with the city charter is because there are, some of those rules are mandated by our charter, such as the Rule of Three, or the promotional reallocation process. So those are the things that are being looked at as relates to charter. If there are other issues regarding our operation of our service system not governed by the charter, those can be discussed through meet and confer, and then discussion with the Civil Service Commission. So the things that we're focused on for the Charter Review Committee, that process, are the Rule of Three, the promotional reallocation process, the length of duration, the length and duration of eligibility lists. Hold on, list here. There's about six items. The layoff, city's layoff procedures, and the duration of our layoff and reinstatement lists, and the length of the probationary period. So those are things that are in the charter that even if we wanted to change, we couldn't without the charter amendment. Some of the other things, I think you're talking about, they can probably be addressed by the rules. I'm not sure that that rule is how it works, but it might be in the context of a layoff, maybe, but not necessarily disciplinary matters. But we can certainly look at that. But those are the items that we're.
I think those were the items I had, you know, I had on my list.
Okay, okay.
And I think the Rule of Three is something we've been trying to, like, look at since Chief Scoggins was the fire chief. Okay. And then, I think there was a comment made by one of the speakers about the Audit Committee and its rules. Is that part of the charter as well, or is that something that the council can take up?
That's in the municipal code.
Okay. And then, with respect to compensation, can you give a brief summary of how that deliberation went?
Sure.
And how they landed at that language?
So as I, as I mentioned, we, I'll go back to, to, we had a discussion, we presented all the models that the council had studied. You know, there was, you know, some cities have it where there's, it's tied to a formula like area median income, or it's tied to some other judicial salaries, some do it, just set a flat amount. We presented all that. There was also, the City of Pasadena has a Compensation Commission, which was, which is a structure where it's, there's a charter provision that has a Compensation Commission. That Compensation Commission is appointed by the City Council, one, not, one appointee per council member. And then they, they set the broad parameters of compensation, so it's not just salaries, other, other benefits. And then, the council can only adjust that by a certain percentage, by 5%. And so that's, so they talked about that for a little bit, and then ultimately, I think they felt, one, it was going to be another layer of bureaucracy, maybe complicated. And ultimately, like I said, the committee centered around the idea, well, there's still flexibility within the state law parameters, where the council is now and what the state law would permit. So if the council just was required to check in every two years and say, "Should we adjust our salary?", then you'd have that opportunity to do so. And so, the, you know, the current council salaries is set at about $1,400 per month, and it hasn't been adjusted since 2013. Actually, I think it was, it was adopted in 2011, but didn't become effective until 2013. And then, you know, based on where our salary is, and based on recent amendment to state law, that could be adjusted upwards to 25. law, that could be adjusted upwards to $2,550 per month. So I think at the end of the day, the committee felt like that was enough, there was enough, you know, movement within that range that the council could just make the change itself.
Thank you. Other questions?
On civil service, yeah, we all have our own ideas, but I'm not deep down in that, in those trenches, right? I want to understand, what is the ask from staff? What is the ask from the management? Because you're managing the city, basically, and there are issues that, when you want to take care of because of civil service rules, sometimes it gets more difficult, it's, sometimes it's impossible, like it was mentioned by Councilmember Asatrian. What is it that you're looking for as far as the changes in civil service system, basically?
Can I just, I'll just maybe speak to that, because that's not really part of this report. I don't think we're ready to really address it yet. We wanted to, there are these subject areas which council had asked us to look at, so we're looking at them, presenting them to the committee. There'll be, I'd hate to put, because we haven't really, I think the idea is, once we talk to the associations further, once we get feedback from the committee, and then even Civil Service Commission and staff would make a recommendation based on that.
But what are you asking us today? What kind of recommendations?
On civil service, nothing.
What, on civil service, nothing?
Nothing, yeah, yeah.
Because there was talk...
Right, I was just providing you an update, that that's something that the committee's still looking at.
Are you asking us about, like, city clerks or city treasurer's position?
Whatever direction you want to provide on those, you can. The only items that we specifically are asking, because these are the things that the committee has actually made recommendations on, to provide, and there are the other items, too, right? Appointed treasurer, elected clerk, and if you want to have a discussion on that, I have to step out of the room. And those additional items related to finance, I could go through those again. But these are the items where we want to get some feedback to see where you're at, and depending on which election you think you might want to have a discussion, we have to move promptly.
I really, I mean, as far as June or November, I don't have a preference. If you have to do it, do anything to put on the ballot, I would rather have it on June, because then it would cost the city more. But as far as the city clerk's position, and city treasurer's position, right now, currently, they are like an independent structure, they're independent office, they get elected, they don't answer to the city council, they don't answer to the city attorneys, or the city manager. Am I correct? I see a problem in that, because I'm not saying change the position from elected to appointed, or what have you. There has to be a change that every department to be a part of the same team. That's my concern. If that is a civil service issue, or changes that needs to be done, I think that should be done, because we all are a team, every department is part of this management team. I think that's how it should be done. But as far as the appointed or elected, it cuts both ways, to be honest with you. You can appoint someone who's not really good, and you have a problem, you know, getting rid of them, or you can have someone elected, and it's a loose cannon, and then if they get reelected, and keep reelecting, people keep, you know, reelecting them, then you can't do anything about it. But because those offices are independent offices, I don't know why, but if there's a change, I like to have a discussion on that.
Thank you. Mr. Rotman.
Okay, a couple things. So first, to clarify what we're doing today. So we're not, this question of elected treasurer, I'm sorry, elected city attorney, appointed treasurer, what is, these are not for us to discuss today, is that right?
No. The committee's going to discuss them unless the council doesn't want them to discuss them.
The committee is still, has yet to discuss them.
Yes, correct.
So those are not for today's discussion.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, you have the authority to say, I don't want the committee to discuss it, but you're not, that's not the ask. We're just providing the information to you. Ultimately, they take the direction from you, so that's why it's there, but...
Okay, next question is, if we were to, let's say, have a, put on the ballot, the question of, let's say, an appointed city clerk or city treasurer, and it were to pass, right, then that would become effective after, because both of these two positions are up for reelection in June, right? If that were to pass either in June or November, it would only come into effect basically four years later, right? When their terms are up.
You know, I think for, we looked at this issue when it was raised in 2013, and I think if you make it, if you have the voters approve it at a regular election, it becomes effective, it can be effective at that point. So even though those people are running, they're not guaranteed that they're going to do that. But that's a policy call for the council. The council can also say, we're going to put this on the ballot, but we're going to let people run, and do it in force. It's a policy call, but legally, you can do it either way.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. Then my last question has to do with timing. So I understand where the committee came out on council districts and elected mayor, but let's say we were to move forward with that, and let's say we were to put that on the November ballot, what would be the timeline? What would we have to do when?
For November?
Yeah.
You'd have to, you know, give us that direction. We would bring, we had drafted, you might remember, but we had drafted '23, maybe early '24, some language on some of these. You might want to have some additional public outreach meetings on the actual maps themselves, I mean, and then you have to decide which map, right? Because we, if you recall, the council had had the discussion about which maps, had narrowed it down to about three, but hadn't picked one. So you'd have to have that discussion as well. And then, we'd have to have all that wrapped up by August.
All of that have to be wrapped up by August?
For the November meeting, for the November election.
Next year.
Okay, so, that could be a decision, okay. So, when would we have to start that process, in your opinion? I know it's a little fuzzy, but when would we have to start? For instance, I mean, I don't feel comfortable today making that call.
Right.
Right? I'm not ready to say, do it or not do it. I understand where the committee came out. It was close, though. It was, if it had been like, you know, 10-2, maybe I would be feeling differently, but it was pretty close. So I still am considering that myself. I'm not ready to take a position on it. But let's say we were to, what would kind of be the point where you would say, you guys have to get off the dime here and make a decision?
For the November election? You know, it would probably be good to do it by the end of the calendar year, so we can wrap up all this stuff. But we probably have a little bit more leeway there, too, frankly.
Okay.
But, yeah, I don't, you know, yeah, you could probably even go into the early part of next year, but, you know, again, there's some pieces you still want to, we still want to get done before then in terms of, because you haven't picked a map, and you might want to get further public outreach on that, you want to give yourself some time to do that. You don't have to. I mean, we've done all the public outreach legally required, but it seems to me like there was still a lot of discussion around the maps, it was probably going to take maybe at least one additional council, maybe two.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
More, right?
Yeah.
So, that's the concern.
Okay, that was what I was trying to get at. All right, thanks.
Mr. Kasaki?
Thank you. So, a couple of questions, but before I do that, I know that we keep using the term council salary, and I know it's a matter of semantics to some, but I prefer the term stipend versus salary, because salary denotes compensation for hours put in, and I can assure anyone, and again, it's not, you know, I'm not taking this personally, or, you know, clutching my pearls, as some would say, but really, it's not salary. It's, salary would be if the voters actually decided to provide, as Ms. Brooks had mentioned, something commensurate with the median household income, or something along those lines. Really, it's just a stipend, and as you mentioned, it has not increased in any way commensurate with what, Consumer Price Index, inflation, or anything else. Because I think when we, words do matter, and when people hear salary, I mean, every day, I shouldn't say every day, it's a hyperbolic term, but at least once or twice a week, and I don't know if my colleagues run into the same thing, in conversations and talking about city issues, the question comes up, well, you know, what do you mean, like, it's not a full-time job?
Yeah.
Right? I mean, has that come up?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Mr. Najarian, Garpetian, are you guys texting each other?
No.
Wait, I mean, it is a full-time job?
No, 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 doesn't it come up where we have to inform, or we tell someone and explain to them it's not a full-time job? The assumption tends to be that we're, it's a full-time job.
In terms of compensation?
Well, just, yes, sure.
Of work.
In terms of work, I'll have my comments in a few moments.
Not me, but they always compliment me on the amount of research I do, and they say it's like a full-time job.
So, well, all right, well, great. So here's what I would say to that.
That's true.
People get compliments on different things, I suppose. I take my compliments wherever I can get them, I guess. So, in terms of the obsolete job titles, and I tried to watch as much of the meetings as I could, you know, time got the better of me, so I didn't get through all of it. But, you know, I did watch, you know, obviously, I was questioning one of the speakers on the insinuation that somehow there was a fix to have the chair installed, or whatever else, because I did watch a lot of it, and I thought for the most part, if not, I'd say, I was very grateful and impressed with the caliber of the discussion, of the individuals and their participation, of the civility with which the meetings were conducted. And it's, again, a lot of time asked from these individuals to put into, so I appreciate that. Location of council meetings, I thought, you know, was a good discussion in terms of, you know, changes. I don't know what necessarily we would propose, but fine with it as it is. Obsolete job titles, yes, if we can clean it up, we should do that. Especially city assessor, something that does not exist anymore, of that sort, I was on board with that. Compensated employment after council service, I think we've had some discussion on that, and I think we may have to flush that out a bit more because of the issues. This, as you mentioned, it may not apply if a person who's on council has run for a, one of these other seats, but then that also can be rolled into a larger discussion as to whether those seats should be elected or appointed. Please remind me, on the city attorney issue, was that something that was, that came out from the committee, or was that something that we had also thrown in there? I think...
It was a committee request.
Yeah, it was a committee request, not a council request.
Correct.
So that organically came up from that? And what was the rationale for that, just like that we let the public decide?
Well, there's been no discussion, but they just had a discussion about agenda, I think they've not had any discussion, yea or nay, about what the pros and cons are.
On the, so one question, on the Santa Monica Voting Rights Act case, which kind of has triggered a lot of our, at least for me, concerns, consternation over what our elected body looks like. What is the update, the most recent update on that issue?
Thank you. It is frustrating, because there doesn't appear to have been a whole lot of movement, so when the Supreme Court remanded that case down to the Court of Appeal, they remanded it to the Superior Court Judge. The judge who tried that case had retired, so got assigned to a new judge. So that's just a monstrous case for a new judge to come learn, and I think he or she, I'm not sure, is, just has been taking a long time. So they haven't ruled yet, one way or the other, on whether or not the plaintiffs have proven a remedy, or proven a violation of the CVRA under the new guidelines announced by the Supreme Court. So it's, there's no, I won't say there's no insight, but it's going to take a long time, because even after that court rules, it's not binding on anybody, it has to go through the appellate process unless those parties decide to settle.
And during the presentations and reports made to the Charter Review Committee, it was made clear that our concerns, at least my concern, and I don't know how many of my colleagues agreed on this, that, you know, wasn't, we don't take the districting issue lightly, but, you know, it is a matter of us, and that's why we went through the whole exercise of community meetings, perhaps not well-attended, but outreach information, because for me, at least, and I'm speaking just for myself, my concern is having districts imposed upon us by a court order, if we are sued and decide to go the way of districts like the school district has and the college board has, which would limit it to five districts, no at-wide, city elected office, or take the initiative to have something prepared in the event that if something was to, we could foresee something happening, or this case not going the way Santa Monica hopes, to have something that would help us determine our future as a city. Was that case presented as such?
We presented information on the CVRA issue, what was going on with the Santa Monica case, how, you know, the court could always fashion a remedy that a city doesn't agree to, and, but we also explained that depending on how the procedural posture of a particular case against Glendale, we might always have the opportunity to work with whoever is challenging us to take a charter amendment to the voters and put both into place. It wasn't clear, but we, they're aware that there's a risk if we, you know, in that regard, that's an issue, over, an issue, I wouldn't say a risk, it's an issue that has to be addressed.
Mayor, the three minutes is up. I accidentally...
It's actually, I want to be fair. I told Mr. Garpetian in particular, I would be fair to everyone.
And I will follow the rules. I apologize. I had more questions, but...
You can circle back. It's not that you're cut off.
Thank you.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, whatever we want to say, whether you want to move into questions or comments, I don't have any questions, I don't believe, but...
I have comments.
I'm just going to go into my comments. So, as far as council districts, I think, I think the vote of the commission, seven to five, really underestimated the strong community opposition to districts. We forgot how that was over a year ago, when Doug Johnson was trying to give us a district lesson, and, actually ironically, the same type of incident occurred, where in those outreach meetings, before even asking, do you want districts, he's asking people to design districts and to create the district. So, if anyone remembers, I was going berserk up here. I was challenging the use of public funds to advance a city proposition. The public caught on and were against the districts. We, as a council, in light of the uncertainty with the Santa Monica case, decided to pause, and since then, it has not gotten any clearer, it has gotten more confusing. Gerrymandering is a national issue now. I see a lot of folks went out to vote, and the Supreme Court may pick this issue up, and the bottom line is, it's not clear how districts, what districts would be required. So the risk, that's relevant, in that the risk of being targeted by those law firms that were picking up cities that weren't districting, I think, is even less than it was when the Santa Monica case came down. You know, expanded council, I think, you know, we have five of us here, and you see how long some of our meetings go. Adds two more, or four more, it would be an incredibly long meeting, and the directly-elected mayor only makes sense if you have districts. The council compensation, so let me tell you, I know there's, we're moving into election season, I just want all you potential candidates to know that your, your income, your way of life, your quality of life, is going to take a huge hit if you achieve your dream of being elected to council. And I'm very ser, I am totally serious about that. It's a wonderful job to have, to help the city, but you get paid nothing, and you, if you have another day job, you cannot hold that day job and work as a city council member unless you completely, you know, disregard your duties as a city council member. We are all over town, all days, all hours of the day. That's just the one, as I see it, in my 21 years of experience, you're going to be paying a huge personal price, both for you, and God forbid you have a family, it's going to be very, very oppressive. That being said, I don't object to this proposal to review it, and to, within the guidelines of the state permission, to add those, to review the compensation every two years. The location of the council meetings, I don't care so much about that, that's not a big deal. We should, this isn't hallowed ground, as long as public has access, we should be able to have meetings in different locations. I do feel very strongly that it is imperative that the city council have some oversight on the city clerk's position, on the city treasurer's position, and the city attorney's position. We can't keep it the way it is now, where an elected person in any of those positions has absolutely no oversight, no, no answering to anyone in the city, except to the voters, every four years. That's a huge mistake, and we should definitely move that to be an appointed position where we can have the best... we can have the best qualified in those positions. As city attorney goes, you can't put that up for election. The city attorney is a very complicated and niche of law, where you are, you are advising on many things, from Brown Act, to land use, to criminal law, to civil law. I mean, it's so broad, you can't just throw that up for election and have some popular guy say, "Yeah, I want to be city attorney", and have him sitting in that seat. Other cities are different. LA is a large city, they've got a huge city attorney department, where the lack of knowledge of that city attorney can be filled in by many different attorneys in that huge department. We don't have that in Glendale. We've got 13 or 14 city attorneys. It would be a very wrong thing to put that up for election. My time is up. Thank you. Now, we're going back to-
Well, I have a big-
Oh, you haven't had your five yet? Okay, Mr. Brothman.
Okay. So, first, I want to thank the compensation, uh, Charter Review Committee for the work that they've done.
It's all about-
It's a lot of work. And a lot of grief sometimes, so I, I do really, really appreciate everybody who participated. I guess here's where I stand. I think, as I said a minute ago, I'm not ready to take a, a position, a final position or decision on, on council districts. However, I think the honest truth is, we don't know where the community stands on this, and won't know where the community stands until we bring it to the voters. So, I want to give some more thought of that, I, thought to that. I, I still think, from a good governance standpoint, it has merits, and we know that there's, there are negatives, there are pros, there are cons, it's complicated, it's really hard to predict how it would play out. And I think we see cities that have done it, and we see cities that have not done it, and it's, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag. But, I, I do still think, as I did many months ago, that on balance, it would provide better representation, better constituent service, and better accountability for, for the council members. So, I, I still, I'm, I'm thinking about that, and I could, at some point, take the position that I think we should move forward with, with that, but I'm not ready to, to go there yet. On compensation, I don't often agree with Ms. Brooks, but I do agree that, you know, 80% of AMI, and we've talked about this before, for council district, the council members, 80% of AMI, maybe for the mayor, 100% of AMI, area median income that is, I think, is, is reasonable, and I think we will be able to attract a broader pool of, of candidates. I don't, I don't know how we get there, so, you know, maybe it is a compensation committee that we need. I'm, I'm interested in that idea. So, I'll just, I'll just put that out there. I think at, at the very least, I know we have some flexibility, and we should probably exercise that. But, I, I do think we should go beyond what, what we are permitted to do now, without any changes to the charter. So, I don't want to close the door on that. And I'll just say, I agree, city attorney should not be an elected position, period, end of story. I don't think the committee should be looking at that. As for city clerk or city treasurer, I think, I think, I, I'm open to the idea that those are appointed positions, but let's, let's have the, let's have the committee look into that. If we did go down that path, I would certainly want to do it, so that we make a decision that's not going to be influencing or impacting anybody that's running right now. So, we would make it, if we did make it, it would come into effect maybe in, in the next cycle. Anyway, that's, and, and for the small cleanup items, the, the location and the job titles, and what was the other one?
The compensation after, compensated employment after council service.
Yeah, the compensation after, uh, not compensation, the-
After employment after-
Employment after council service. Yeah, those three, I mean, ideally, those could be wrapped into one measure, so people aren't voting on this long list of complicated things, and, and I think that's fine. I, I'm seeing that maybe not, so, I don't know. I think Mr. Kosakian is more expert in this than I am in, in elections, so I'll defer to him, but it seems like these are such minutie, you know, such like detailed things, that I don't know that people are really even going to know what to do when they, you know, when they see those on the ballot. But I'll leave that to people that are more expert than me.
In 2005, we had a ton of charter amendments. Do we not, how many were on the ballot?
Eighteen to 20.
Okay, we're down to the three-minute round now. If anyone feels that they need to-
No comments.
Okay. Mr. Garpetian, you can go first.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, are we making recommendations on the city treasurer's or, clerk's position? Because I was talking about that, then Mr. Brothman said, "That's not what you're talking about", and you said, "Yeah", and then he made those, I mean, what is, are we making-
So, we're not asking for recommendation on those, because they're, that's, we're asking for recommendation on these matters, the definitely, you know, district, compensation, and these additional matters, like location of council meetings, obsolete job titles, and compensated employment. So, the reason, it, it was in the report, though, because we were updating you on what the committee is going to be looking at, and if you want to provide a direction on those, you can, but we're not, we're not asking for it.
And you're keeping my time, right?
I paused your time, and I restarted.
I reclaim my time. Okay. I think the committee has done a great job. I want to thank every committee member. I'm ready to accept committee's recommendation. I think was a, this is a reflection of what the, what the community wanted. We can't say it was close, but most of the decisions we make up here is close to it. It's always three to two, hardly four to one, or I haven't seen five to zero yet in last couple of months or so. But, so every, every vote could be, you know, considered close. I think districting will be detrimental to our community. It will allow the special interest groups to really pour funds into a small district and do whatever they want, and push their candidates. As far as the compensation goes, look, it's, it's tough. It's very tough. You can spend five hours a week, or you can spend 40 hours a week on this position. It's up to you. I spent most of my, my Tuesdays, and at least half of my Mondays on this, except, you know, besides all the events that we have to go to, I try to make most of them. It is tough. I, I don't want this position to be a job title. People run for it for the salary. They have to run for it because they have passion for it. They have to run for it because they care about the community, not only for the money. If you make it really high, then people run for it just for the, for the, for the money, basically, for the salary. So, that's, that's a fine line, I don't know which way to go with it. I'm willing to listen to what the committee will come up with. Location of council meetings, I think, I don't know, we, I, I don't think by law we can make a decision outside the, that's what we're trying to change, so if you go to one of those councils in your community, you can make a decision there. Is that what, what this is?
Allow the council to hold special meetings in the public in Glendale, as long as they're noticed and everything.
Obsolete job titles, that's fine. Whatever we want to do, if there is a measure that has to go on the ballot, I think it should be on June, not November, so there are more people participating, and you can have a better idea of to what the community wants. And one, one complaint that I had about the report that we have, was the, you know, there was a motion, and it didn't say, didn't give us the option, say, "Do you want to go to district?", like here, it says, "Accept the committee's recommendation or reject it", that wasn't there, and I brought it up at the, at our briefings, and it was said it's just a placeholder. And it just asked about council district, compensation, whatever, but it, it's, it was kind of confusing to me why there's a motion when we are just making recommendations today. But it was explained to me, because people asked me to, and that's why I was, I was, I brought up, I brought that up at the, at our briefings. Timing, I talked about. And look at the results of the elections in GUSD and GCC, especially GCC, after they went to districts, not much changed after, until they, they retire, no one runs against the incumbents. It happens with the GUSD, but we saw what happened in the last election. Some candidate has the big outside special interest groups pouring money into these elections, like over, I don't know, 80,000 or 100,000, and that helps the candidates in, in district elections. And as far as Santa Monica goes, and the threat of being sued, we, we heard that since 2012, we told them to, oh, am I out? Is my time up?
I was, I was being generous, but you're, I mean, conclude your last-
I, I just, again, I'm, I'm, my position on this thing hasn't changed, on the, the mayor's at large, that hasn't changed either. I think I'm ready, at any time you want to make a decision, to accept committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Tucktollian has a-
Mayor Nadari, members of council, what would be helpful is, Mr., if you can go to slide seven, what would be helpful is, since we're at the comment stage, if we can get some feedback from council members, whether or not there is a desire for the committee to go and have individual discussions on these particular items. I know the city attorney can't really opine on the, or discuss the elected city attorney, but if there's a desire for us to go and have a conversation with the, the Charter Review Committee about an elected, or an appointed city treasurer, or an appointed city clerk, which is something that's come up a number of times here tonight, up at the dais, tonight will be the night to give us that direction as well. If there is a desire for the committee to discuss that, we'd want, we'd, we'd want that feedback as well.
If I could just, if you're going to discuss the city attorney, please let, let me step out of the room, before you have that discussion.
I already discussed it.
I know. And I stepped out when you did. And I stepped out when you-
It's not about you personally, it's about the office.
Well, but again, I think it's potential, I just don't want to be, participate in that discussion whatsoever, so I'd just have a separate discussion about those. But we, you know, if you-
Can I comment on this? On this list?
Yeah, but if you-
I'm not, I'm not going to give detailed comments. I'm going to say, I'm okay with everything except the elected city attorney on this list.
Okay, council member-
Or for the committee to further evaluate. That's what we're being asked, right?
Okay.
Is that, does that make sense? Am I, am I saying the right thing? I, I think the question is, do we support the committee evaluating these things? And I'm saying yes to everything on this list, except the elected city attorney.
Correct. And the reason why I was asking for clarification is because I get that, but you also made comments specific about the city clerk position, which isn't something that the, the committee themselves brought up as a topic of conversation for them to have, but I'm hearing, or we're hearing, a, a number of you raising that. So, if there are things that you'd like the committee to either discuss specifically or not discuss, we'd want you to go off of this list and, and make those comments clear.
I'd just say, I, I'd add that city clerk's office as well to this list, the appointed position.
And I made my comments on that. Mr. Brothman, did you, you said you were good with everything except the elected city attorney?
Right.
The upcoming issues.
Right.
Councilmember Osaturnia.
All right. I'm still making up my mind on the council districts. I would like the elected mayor to be separated out. I think the more, I'm definitely not okay with the way that the maps were drawn and the process that we went through. I think I spoke heavily on that when we had the consultant and we were going through that process. The council compensation, I don't think there's anybody that can really speak to it more than I can. I've time and again for the last three years have talked about how it's really been like committing financial suicide. I will tell you that I took four days with my family, and I'm at 1,107 text messages and 79 missed phone calls that I have not responded to, just in those four days. So, all of our experiences are very, very different. I think the broader your outreach and the number of folks that are reaching out to you, the more demand there is. And I've talked about this when we talked about staffing for city council members, that I at least feel like I'm continuously failing, because there is no staff support in the sense of anybody checking our emails, or even coordinating beyond our general calendars, which also tends to be a mess. So, I do think that having maybe 80% AMI, and maybe something a little higher for the mayor, I've also spoken to that you don't have to be waiting for that time for you to be mayor in order to serve at that capacity. We're all elected for four years and carry the same responsibilities beyond just being the spokesperson, as well as running the meetings, and I, I think that this, this position, while it's called a part-time position, really, especially with the times, requires you to dedicate a whole lot more than one or two or three days a week, and most definitely almost all of your week to city council priorities. With respect to the location of the council meetings, I would like to see a cleanup of the language that allows flexibility for us to hold meetings outside of the city council chambers. So, if it means special, you're calling it special meeting, then let's clean that up. Provided that the Civil Service Commission, or the Civil Service items would require for us to go to November, I would assume that it would cost us, if we are going to end up putting something on in November, then I would want to know what the cost difference would be if we split it between June and November, and/or just bundle everything in November, and the costs of that is what would determine my decision on that.
We can get you some more information on that, but to your point, once you put something on the November election, it's going to be a, a static fixed cost, it's going to be maybe five, at least 500,000 probably?
Right.
So, once you do that, then the marginal cost is how much it costs you to, for, for printing. So, you're right, because whether we put stuff in the June, it's going to increase our June cost, which we're going to incur anyway, because there's a June election. So, it's probably the same marginal difference whether you do June or November, is what I'm thinking. But I, we don't have, we don't, we can't really get an estimate for the November cost. We tried. They, they don't have that information available to us. But, for example, if we put charter amendments on, if we put eight pages of charter amendments on the ballot in June, the estimate we got is about 840,000 versus 600,000 with no charter amendments. So, let's just give you order of magnitude.
May I?
Yes.
So, in terms of the difference, if you were to do it in June, you have different types of ballots, because you have partisan primaries.
Yeah.
It's more printing and different types of ballot printing, which increases the cost, versus a November election, which is one type of ballot, because everyone's voting on the same slate of candidates and issues. That's part of, you're right, in, in some respects, that that's what causes-
That's probably driving it somehow.
And then, just for clarity, if we're, if the goal is to have as many people participating as possible, to the point where June versus November, general elections have higher voter turnout than primary elections.
And it is gubernatorial elections, so-
Yeah, that has statistically more participation. Yes, gubernatorial or primary elections.
Okay. And then, the, the, the city attorney, I still think needs to be appointed. I would want them to take a look at the civil service process. I'm okay with our city treasurer and city clerk being elected. I would want them to look at the gender neutral terms. When you say financial provisions, are you talking about procurement language?
No, no. So, there's, there's some provisions of our city charter that pertain to how we maintain certain funds, the general fund, the general reserve fund. They, technically, in their little term, literal terms, they're not, they're not compliant with generally accepted accounting principles. So, it was some, we were trying, we tried cleaning it up about 12 years ago. The, the ballot measure didn't pass for reasons not really related to the ballot measure itself. So, that was, again, that's something that I'm not sure the committee is going to discuss. There's one committee member, Vice Chair Povolitis, who said, "I may want to consider it, I may ask the committee", so they haven't made a decision whether they even really want to ask the council to consider it. We've worked with those provisions, even though they're outdated, we've worked with them ever since, and so it's not like a thing that has to happen from staff's view, it's just, if we're cleaning stuff up, it might make sense to try to clean it up.
So, you don't have the procurement on the list, and that was one of the things that we-
Again, that's, again, that's, that's a code issue, that's not a charter issue.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, the charter, Measure A, that was adopted last year, will allow us more flexibility, where that's something we're working on right now, but it's, it's been addressed in the charter, now we just have to address it in the code.
Okay. All right.
All right, has everyone, did you have a chance?
No, no, I haven't made, I'm sorry, I, I did ask questions, I haven't made my comments. So, on the upcoming issues, I do think that if there's going to be any discussion on a appointed city treasurer, it's also fair to include a discussion on that, just because to single out treasurer. Again, all these, I don't want to inject my personal opinions on them, on these items, because I don't want to, it to appear that I'm trying to influence the discussion one way or another. But it's fine for all of these to be discussed, even though, again, I think some are less of a priority and less important than others. On the elected city attorney, I am not, I don't- On the elected city attorney, I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion other than to say that the annals of local government history are full of really terrible and horrifying situations where an elected city attorney has not been the best decision for a local agency because of the role that the, that has. So, but if there is a strong desire, sure, discuss it. Ultimately, council will decide whether we move forward with these on the ballot, even with their recommendations. So going back to the, the prior items that were discussed, I appreciate the feedback that staff is providing this update. Again, thank you to the members who had these discussions. I also would like to think on the districts a little bit more because, and I'm going to take the higher view of all of this as to where I'm coming from. Mr. Mayor Najarian mentioned that when you're on council, your income and way of life takes a huge hit. And that is fairly accurate. You know, everyone, as Mr. Garpedian said, you put in however amount of time that you want to put in. But I also believe that, you know, there is a correlation between the amount of time that council members put in and the quality of representation, service access that members of the public receive. And having said that, you know, we, this is not necessarily about the compensation, but just to say, the parameters or these requirements, compensation, citywide versus district, have kind of funneled and restricted participation from a diverse cross-section of the community. You know, it is, when you look at when the last time was that there was anyone who was a renter on this dais, someone who was not a homeowner, I can't remember historically when that was. And you were, but you were a homeowner and then you were a renter, correct?
Right.
So circumstances that led you to be a renter notwithstanding, sure. So, and I was a renter when I was elected city clerk. So there's that as well. But I'm talking about those decisions being made. How do we expand the, the pool of candidates, whether, you know, it's campaign, making sure that we have publicly funded campaigns requisite on signatures, which we tried in the past and did, did not succeed. But ultimately, you know, how, one of the questions I would have asked the Charter Review Committee is like, how do you make more people participate in the electoral process? So it's not relegating it to just one segment of the community. And I will just close with this. Over 60% of the city of Glendale is renters, yet almost 90, if not 100% of the people that sit up here are homeowners. That is not a way to make decisions impacting the whole city. And we can sit here and go through the verbal gymnastics of explaining how we as homeowners are representing the full city. Sure, you can believe that if you want. But the reality of it is, there hasn't been a renter voice up here in a long, long time, except for the short period that Councilmember Najarian, and in the past, I believe, Councilmember Draymond, when his home was being renovated, and we won't get into that. Various people have rented at various times. Some of you remember that, right? So let's, let's, let's call balls and strikes up here. That's my interest in this. And for that, I'll, I'll hold off on, on this now. I want to, I want to let it sink in a little bit before. But I do appreciate their work. So yeah, those are my comments. I went on long enough. Thank you.
Okay. I do want to urge my colleagues, we have several weighty issues ahead of us, and I'm going to stop this meeting at 11, just so you know. But.
You know, every time, just, just 30 seconds. Every time that council member, Kasakian, wants to make points or whatever, he mentions me by name. And I think, I didn't, I didn't know that we're discussing, discussing districts and how, which one is better, if it's good or not, do we want districts or not. I, I always said was, I want to, I want to go with the recommendation. We want to have a discussion on districts, and what are the pros and cons on, on renters. Renters are not part of CBRA. That has to be very clear. CBRA, California Water Designs Act, has nothing to do with geography, or you being a renter or a homeowner. And also, we had a South Glendale renter who ran last election and spent very minimal amount, less than a thousand, if I'm not mistaken, and almost had 9,000 votes. So it's a matter of, and most of her votes were from North Glendale. If you want to start comparing renters and the South Glendale and North Glendale, I think this division, that's what districts would do. It would just divide the city even furthermore. That's all I have to say.
If I, Councilmember Garpedian, if you felt I mentioned you by name, or if I did, I apologize. That wasn't my intent. I hope you don't take it as such. I can understand how some of my comments, some individuals may take more personally than others. That was not, and I apologize.
No worries. I appreciate that. But that happens every week. Otherwise, I wouldn't have mentioned it. But, but it's okay. I, I accept your apology.
I, I beg to differ. That is not how I was raised. That's not how I conduct myself. But again, if you do, I'm happy to have a conversation with you offline.
Okay.
As to how you feel.
Let's do that.
Mr. Garcia, how are we going to deal with these? We do have, we're not unanimous on.
Sure.
Several of them. Do you want to take it?
So absent any council member wanting to make a motion, I can just summarize where, where I heard the direction. So on council districts and directly elected mayor, two council members supported accepting the council, the committee's recommendation, while three want more time to study the issue and think about it. On council compensation, I heard, again, I heard two council members supporting the committee's recommendation, and three council members, well, I heard two council members thinking 80% AMI was the right number. I'm not sure if Councilmember Kasakian, if you, you just want more time to think about as well, but you.
I, I'm fine with the, what was proposed, although I don't think that addresses a fundamental issue. If that's what we end up putting to the voters, I'd support it.
Okay.
Can we, can we get the original different?
I'll provide it. I may have a slide if you want to go through it, but otherwise, but I can just, if you're just saying, present that information to you again, send it out to you. I'm happy to do that.
I think that would be great. And then I think what I would like to add to that, if my colleagues are open to it, I would like to create a system. I recognize that it's noting, like their recommendation was noting for the council to take up the discussion. What I would like to see, because I think that as I've seen the conversations around compensation go, it's always very weird to be up here and talk about compensation for yourself. And so what I would like is for us to set up a structure where certain elements of the compensation, when the item is brought up, is already kind of built in, and they're, it kind of rolls over, very similar to how you do campaign finance, because then it takes away from, you know, council members voting for compensation for themselves, but we're building for something for the future of our city and how the council is being compensated. More of a system versus.
Okay.
You know, kind of a discussion every time, which leads to these awkward, like, well, I'm asking for.
We could probably bring you some additional information on, like, for example, passing his model, that's one way, or, but you were talking about just a system that's sort of, it's automatic.
Percentage increase.
Yeah, percentage increase.
I mean, the state law prohibits automatic increases, but there's probably ways to do it. So some features of it are, like, the benefit piece is sort of established, which it is. That's currently how it is. So that part of it can be flushed out a little bit more. We could bring you some more information on that. And then, oh, I'm sorry. What I heard was acceptance on the location of council meetings, obsolete titles, and the compensated employment after council service.
On the, on the location, I'm of the mindset that official decisions should be only made in one location, should not be allowed to be made outside of the council chambers.
Okay. But, okay. And I heard from the other council members, they were okay with it. And again, the idea is that the, the language, because the, on this one, the Charter Committee actually recommended language. So it's, our regular meetings, so which were most of the ones where we actually take action, would have to occur here in chambers. Council could choose to have a special meeting offsite and choose to take action at that meeting if it's so desired. That's, that's the way the, the charter language that the committee approved. And so that's, that would be a flexibility. But I'm hearing you're not supportive of that.
Right now, council can take actions in case of emergency. If we, if the mayor and the city manager declare a state of emergency, if something were to happen to this building, we're allowed to have decisions outside of here.
That's correct.
I think the, you know, when, when we have these discussions and, you know, after, if this were to pass, I can only see the folks who come to the dais and say, well, you know, you did this so you could kind of do the, the, whatever, the shuffling game to move the meeting to a different location where folks from one part couldn't participate, and folks from another part of the city can't participate. There's a reason why the meetings have to happen at a centralized official location where decisions are made, versus, you know, having decisions, I can picture this, have a council, have a meeting all the way up in the northern portion of the city, that make decisions that are impacting the southern portion of the city. That's my concern. That's why I'm.
Understood.
It's a good point.
And then, and then on appointed city, consideration of appointed city clerk and appointed city treasurer, it wasn't unanimous, but I think majority of the council wanted the committee to look at those issues. I'll let Mr. Tuck Talian summarize the deliberation on the elected city attorney. And in terms of timing, given that you're, you're putting off basically the districts and mayor and the compensation, I'll tell you, it will not go in June. It'll go, it'll go in November, if at all. And then we'll build a package in, and that'll give us time to circle back on the civil service stuff and bring it back to you for another discussion.
Is there anything in our charter related to an ethics commission?
There's nothing expressly authorizing it. There's nothing prohibiting it.
So, okay. I would like to agendize then for us to talk about creating an ethics commission for the city separately.
Do you have a second for that?
I mean, I think it just has to come back as new business.
As new business.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, I didn't hear desire to, to do, to take any action on any of these items, but that's, that's the direction we heard, unless there's any additional feedback.
All right. Is that what everyone desires as direction?
Did you get the gender neutral?
We'll put that, that's, again, the, the committee is going to take these things up unless the council says not to, so.
Well, wait a minute. Oh, they're going to take it up?
Yeah.
Okay, there's gender neutral, and then there's, like, I don't want the they, them, because that's going to make things very confusing.
I'm not sure that's the intent. I think it's, it's, just so you know, the, the charter, you know, obviously in several places, it says, you know, the.
Not what you mean, right?
The director.
The singular.
It doesn't need to say councilwoman or councilman.
I got you.
And it says, there's places where it says he. And just so you know, the, the charter has a, has a provision from the 2005 amendment, which says wherever the masking is used, a shower also referred to feminine. It already exists, but I think some of the committee members want to say, no, we should go through the charter and take out he and put he or she. That's, that's the, that's my understanding.
My intent and supporting. Okay, so is there a motion?
Or what was, or what was summarized by the city attorney? I'll, I'll make that motion.
Do you want the city attorney info? Did you need to summarize?
I really don't have much.
If you're going to do a motion, it has to be separate motion. So why don't you take a motion on these items? I mean, again, there's no motion, because I think there's not consensus on all these. I'm just going to.
Yeah, I'm not going to.
So what are we doing then?
So you gave me direction.
Direction is fine.
If you want to give direction to Mr. Tuck Talian on the city attorney, I can step out of the room.
Why not? I mean, just for the sake of doing this and so we can move the meeting along, right?
Okay, everybody gets 30 seconds.
We already said it.
Okay.
I will just summarize that. I believe that there was a majority of the council at the dais who was not supportive of the Charter Review Committee taking up the conversation of an elected city attorney.
Correct.
Correct.
That's the direction.
And then I am on record saying that I want to keep the elected city clerk and city treasurer.
Correct.
Okay. They're going to discuss the city treasurer and city clerk.
Okay, so, direction is given. You can come in, Mr. Garcia, and no vote is required. Is that correct? Is a vote required for any, for the?
No, because you haven't given us direct.
Seeing this direction.
No, because we're basically bringing these things back to you.
Okay. All right. What I want to ask, that concludes this item. I want to ask the city manager, we have three items ahead of us, the mayor selection, the heat pump, the hearing on the land, the stage two design.
Yes, sir.
How many people are here on the stage two design? And which of those is the least timely, time constrained, out of those three?
Mayor, mayor selection.
Yeah, is the least.
Least.
Right. Okay, so we'll put mayor selection last.
Correct.
We will do, let's do the heat pump, and then we'll go to the hearing, and then if there's time, we'll go to the mayor selection.
Yes.
Okay, will you please read nine B, please?
Management services regarding local amendments to the 2026 edition of the California Building and Energy Code to require projects in a single-family homes, duplexes, and townhouses involving replacement or alterations, but not repair of an existing air conditioning system or installation of a new air conditioning system to include either a heat pump space conditioner as a primary heating system, or install specific energy efficiency measures in addition to a new air conditioner. One, ensure ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, California, amending the 2026 Glendale Building Safety Code volume 10, or Glendale Building Standards, to require nine, require energy conservation measures for air condition alterations, replacements, and installations in existing single-family residential buildings, and required findings related thereto.
Mr. Galanian.
Mr. Mayor, my city council was on August 12th of this year that the city council directed staff to develop a, an air conditioner to heat pump, AC2HP, reach code in existing single-family homes, as well as duplexes and townhomes. With that, I'm going to turn it over to David Jones, our sustainability officer, to present this item for your consideration.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor Najarian and members of the city council. So I'm going to reintroduce the AC to heat pump ordinance for city council's consideration. And I'll go through the presentation and then hopefully respond to any questions council may have. So the ordinance objectives of such an ordinance, to require energy upgrades when replacing or adding a central air conditioner, upgrade to an electrical heat pump space heater, and comply with the state code. And one may keep or replace an existing furnace for supplemental heating only. Or one may keep a gas furnace and make additional energy improvements. Such an ordinance would meet federal and state requirements, as electric heat pump is not required, but encouraged. In terms of the policy context, the ACT heat pump is offered as a voluntary measure for local adoption under the California Building Standards Code. The proposed reach code includes some changes to the Cal Green text to facilitate implementation. Just a quick reminder of the rationale for this. Heat pumps result in major greenhouse gas emission reductions, the reason being that they are two to four times more efficient than gas furnaces. And they are powered by electricity, which in California is mostly come from renewable energy sources. The heat pump can be both an air conditioner and a space heater. There is no onsite combustion of gas and no risk of carbon monoxide poisoning from the space conditioning system. So this policy would apply to single-family homes, duplexes, and townhomes. So the policy would take effect when one either replaces or adds a central air conditioner. One would install a model that functions as a heat pump, so it both heat and cool the space, meet state code requirements that apply to the project, and one may keep an existing gas furnace for supplemental heating only. Or one can keep a gas furnace and meet state code requirements that apply to the project and meet additional local energy code requirements. I just want to clarify that this such a policy would not happen if somebody was to repair a component part of their AC or their space conditioning system. It would only happen, again, on replacement or adding a central air conditioner. Oops, excuse me. This chart shows two AC pathways, one with an existing duct system, and another pathway with a new duct system alongside the heat pump pathway. This figure presents the proposed energy efficiency upgrade measures that would be part of the reach code. So those are the measures in solid blue on this diagram. And along with the relevant requirements from Title 24, Part 6 of the California Energy Code, that are triggered as part of equipment replacements. So those in white or gradient. So those in white and gradient would happen in any case, separate from the reach code if you're going to replace a heat pump or add a new furnace. Just to clarify, if the way the reach code is potentially written, if you're going to install a heat pump, you just have to meet the state wrote, state code requirements. There'd be no additional requirements. there'd be no additional requirements from a local perspective. If you're going to continue with an air conditioner and a furnace, you again, would have to meet the state code requirements, those are the columns on the left, but you'd also have to meet additional local energy code requirements. So if you had an existing duct system, that would be, you'd have to improve your fan efficiency, you'd have to improve your insulation, and you'd have to make sure you meet certain air sealing requirements. If you're installing a brand-new system, new ducts, et cetera, et cetera, and again, the column on the left, you'd have to meet by state code, the only additional local requirement for that would be to improve your fan efficiency. When looking at these reach codes, and when considering a reach code, the reach code has to be considered cost-effective. The primary purpose of a cost-effective study for California reach codes is to demonstrate that the proposed local building energy codes are financially viable for customers, requiring that savings from the reduced energy costs offset the initial implementation costs. In California, the energy code sets statewide minimum efficiency requirements for buildings. A reach code is a local ordinance that reaches beyond these minimums, making the requirements more stringent to save more energy or reduce greenhouse gas emissions. What the cost-effectiveness study does, by adopting the reach code, California Energy Commission requires that the local energy prove that the code is cost-effective, again, lifetime energy savings for the building owner or occupant outweigh any additional upfront costs, and that the reach code is technically feasible. The California Energy Commission cost-effective studies for the 2025 Energy Code analyzes the incremental or marginal cost difference between the proposed measures and the baseline code. This is now, this analysis is structured to compare the baseline, replacing an existing air conditioner with a new code compliant air conditioner, potentially with an existing furnace in place, or being replaced as a separate baseline cost. The proposed measure case, replacing the existing system with an all-electric heat pump that provides both heating and cooling. The study does not analyze the total all-encompassing costs of a complete heat pump system versus a complete AC first, AC and furnace system in isolation. Instead, it focuses on the net additional cost or savings incurred by the building owner or the state specifically due to the code change, and encourages or requires the heat This table indicates the incremental costs and savings of heat pumps as analyzed by the cost-effectiveness study. Converting to a heat pump will cost a bit more, depending on whether the furnace would otherwise need to be replaced anyway, but the bill savings more than offset those initial costs. The bottom table assumes that the furnace is relatively new and be left in place. The incremental cost consists of the heat pump, plus also the full cost of integrating the new heat pump with the current air handler in the existing furnace, so they can talk to each other. The top table assumes that the homeowner would need to replace the furnace around the same time as implanting the heat pump, so the incremental cost is just the cost of the heat pump over and above a normal AC unit. As with many ordinances, there are exceptions, there are some general exceptions, these are when the capacity of the existing main electrical service panel is insufficient to supply the electrical capacity of a heat pump sized to meet the heating load, the ordinance would be exempt, and where required capacity of a heat pump is 12,000 BTU, are now more than the air conditioner capacity. This does not really comply to where we are in California, this is more for the high mountain areas. There's also a number of specific exemptions, these have been outlined in the staff report, so they're not all listed here, but this will just give you a general idea of what those specific exemptions may be. One of the requirements of the potential ACT heat pump reach code is that you have R49 attic insulation and air sealing. For example, you would not require to have this additional attic insulation if you're already insulated to a certain value, there'd be an R38. Also, if the attic cannot accommodate the full R value, you'd be able to install a different type of insulation. Also, if existing duct systems were constructed or insulated or sealed with asbestos, you'd be exempt, and dwelling units with knob and tube, tube wiring would also be exempt from such an ordinance. So recommendations are for city council to introduce an ordinance, adopting local amendments to the 2026 California Building and Safety Code, and the form of the proposed AC to heat pump reach code, and make findings in accordance with the Health and Safety Code, Section 7958, and sequencing. With that, I am available to answer any questions.
Mayor, I have eight cards and two callers currently.
I just want to clarify a few things, because there's, you know, a lot of, I think, misunderstanding and getting emails about things, which I think reflect some bad information being-
Microphone.
Do I need to repeat that? Anyway, I hope you can clarify a few things. So is, is anybody being forced to change any appliances at this time, assuming this goes into effect?
So if the city council chooses to adopt this heat, this ordinance, it would apply on replacement. So if you're going to replace your air conditioner, it would apply at that point, but we're not forcing people wholesale to change what they have.
Okay, so nobody is being forced to rip out any appliances and replace them, it is only if they are voluntarily replacing a system, either because they want to, or because it's no longer repairable. And repairs, standard repairs would not trigger this requirement, but if it's at the point where it really has to be entirely replaced, then, and only then, would this come into effect, correct?
That is correct, so it's the replacement of the air conditioning system.
Okay, are people being forced to remove their gas furnaces?
No, the purpose, the way this reach code has been written, is people could continue to use an AC system with a gas furnace, they'll just have to meet additional energy efficiency requirements, and those additional energy efficiency requirements have been put in place, so the gas furnace and the AC meet the efficiency of the heat pump, so they kind of equal.
Right, but I'm, what I was saying is, if, if I were to put in a heat pump, for instance, I can keep my gas furnace, I don't need to remove it.
Correct, but your, your gas furnace wouldn't be allowed to be the primary heating, it would be backup heating.
But it would stay there, it would be backup heating.
Yes, it would.
Correct, okay. And, and if my gas furnace goes out and I want to replace it with a new gas furnace, I can do that, right?
You are able to do that, yes.
We are not prohibiting people from putting in gas. And none of this applies to any other gas appliances in the home, water heaters, stoves, anything like that?
This is focused just on the AC to heat pump, that's all.
Okay, and, and I know those are things we all knew, but I, I mean, I've gotten emails, assuming each one of these things are, are different than what they actually are, and I've, you know, and I've asked, and people are getting this information on Nextdoor, and it's very disappointing, so I want to make sure that, that is cleared up. Just a couple more things, so the heat pumps, you say, are about, if, if I'm just putting in a standard heat pump and not replacing my furnace, it's, it's going to cost me about $2,000 more than if I were to just put in a standard air conditioner replacement, is that right?
So that is the information that's been provided to us through the cost-effectiveness study, yes.
Okay, and our GWP rebate covers some of that, all of that, more than all of that? Can you address that?
So the current GWP rebate is $500 per ton, and in this part of the world, California, most systems are four-ton systems, so that is 2,000.
So it would cover pretty much the entire cost?
The incremental cost.
Maybe with a little bit of a margin on top of that, okay. All right, I'm gonna leave it there, I just wanted to clear those things up.
Okay, let's hear from the public.
Questions, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, if you'd like to go now, you can.
Yeah. If I have an existing split level, or split unit, condenser end, and gas furnace, and my condenser goes out, I want to replace the condenser only, do I have to replace my gas furnace as well, or go to heat pump?
That's a very good question, Mr. Carpetian, and I think I may have not answered that correctly previously. So if you're just going to replace your condenser, that would be considered a repair, so that wouldn't affect the whole system, so no, you would not have to replace your gas furnace with a heat pump, because you'd just be fixing that condenser, that'd be a portion of your system that you're fixing.
Not fixing, replacing the condenser.
Indeed, because you're not replacing the AC unit, you're just replacing the condenser.
Okay, so if I, you mentioned that you can go to heat pump and keep your furnace as well as a backup heater, I mean, that's kind of, you have two heaters in your house, two systems, who would do that?
So, no, it's just, so if you installed a heat pump, the heat pump would act as the cooling and the heating system.
Right.
If you had an existing furnace, you'd install the heat pump, and you'd keep your current furnace, that current furnace would only be allowed to be used when the heat pump cannot effectively heat the space. And there's regulations that say that that switch occurs when it reaches 35 degrees. So, is that clear or not?
I understand, so you're saying if I have a, a brand-new heat pump system, and the heater doesn't, because if I have, I don't know, a thousand-square-foot house, they put a four-ton whatever, unit in there, and that, that heat pump does not heat the, the 1,000 square-foot, you know, unit, then my furnace, old furnace that I have, is going to kick in and do the, do the rest?
So, correct, so it is a backup system, but under state code, if you're going to install a heat pump, that heat pump has to be able to condition the space that it's going to be installed for. So it'd be on rare occasions, so it's mainly, it's like in very cold climates, that that would kind of kick in, and that's why there's that 35 degrees Celsius level in the state code.
Okay, and in your calculation on future savings and the cost of the heat pump versus split, split unit, have you calculated the cost of, like, let's say, the retrofit you have to do, the, the insulation you have to install if you want to keep your regular furnace, or your old furnace, that's still working and you don't have to replace?
That's a very good question, Councilmember Carpetian, so we did not, the city staff did not do the cost-effectiveness analysis, that was done by the local energy codes teams. And the reason they do that is, as staff in the city, we don't have the modeling software that they do, they'll be able to compares the reach code to the state code, so that's why we go outside and ask this organization to prepare the cost-effectiveness study.
And do you know what the cost of the retrofit is, the one that they, they calculated?
So, again, that is hard to define, so I assume you're talking about if you're installing, if you're keeping your gas, if you're keeping your AC and keeping your gas furnace, there's additional energy efficient requirements, such as extra insulation.
Insulation, the, if you have to, you know, upgrade your, your panel, if you have to do wiring, if you have to do retrofit your utility closet, if you will, because the new system will not fit in the, where the old furnace system was.
So, again, under this reach code, it's only the fan efficiency, attic insulation, air sealing, that you would be required to do additionally above the base code.
No, I understand.
So if you're going to do attic insulation, if you have a house that is pre-1978, that may have very different attic insulation than a house that is, say, 1991 or 2002, so there's going to, we can't predetermine what those differences to, to insulate those houses, because we don't know if people have done upgrades in those houses, et cetera, et cetera. And they have estimated that attic insulation, just say for a pre-1978 house, may cost $5,000 for attic, for the same attic insulation in the house in 1992, they've estimated that the R49 attic insulation would cost $2,000.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that, thank you. Let's, let's move on, Mr. Ryan, I know we have speakers.
Patrick Murphy, Patrick, you have three minutes, then I have Joseph Ramos.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor again. I got to point out, lack of outreach here, and engagement with no information to the public, there was no outreach on this issue. As I previously mentioned, this reach code is inappropriate and will cost homeowners significant upfront expense, as well as increased operating costs. Using the Glendale Water and Power Public Benefit Fund to provide rebates is not equitable, as it will cause renters to subsidize homeowners to change their systems. Please do not make the claim that people are not being forced to replace their current systems, because if they choose to not do so, the code calls for extensive upgrades, which he just mentioned, which can be as costly, if not more so, than the new heat pump, and without rebates. That is the definition of being caught between a rock and a hard place. There are many older homes throughout Glendale with low and fixed-income homeowners, where the replacements will be necessary. A heat pump will not be less expensive than natural gas, especially given what we have with Glendale Water and Power rates continuing to climb. Lastly, this is not a state of California issue, as this reach code is just that, it is reaching beyond the requirements of the state. Please do not adopt this ordinance, thank you.
Next is Joseph Ramos, Joseph, you have three minutes, right after that, it's Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council. Joseph Ramos for the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. More than 80% of our members are mom-and-pop owners with 20 or fewer units. We strongly oppose a proposed ordinance requiring heat pumps or additional energy efficiency actions for heating when an air conditioning unit for cooling is replaced. There is no data supporting the ordinance, as it only requires replacement of the furnace for heating and not the air conditioning unit for cooling, despite a heat pump being able to do both. To the contrary, the Frontier Energy Report presumes that the air conditioning until will be replaced by the heat pump for cooling in all instances. It contains no data on replacement for heating only. This ordinance will devastate duplex owners and their renters. As the owner of the system is different from the, from the user of the system, there are no life of the system benefits for either party. The rental housing providers will face a costly, unnecessary expense, and the renter will face greatly increased utility bills for running the electric, the electric heating. It is a lose-lose proposition. We urge the city council to once again reject the ordinance in its entirety. Thank you for your time.
Mike Mohill, right after Mike Mohill, it's Jackie Gish.
Evening, council members, my name is Mike Mohill. I'm not, I'm a little bit confused, is, is this either a state law, or is it a city law? I'm not clear. In any case, to me, as a, as a, I am a homeowner of a house that was built in 1977, and I have central air. If I have problems, my costs will go up. I'm not alone, there are many homes that were built prior to 1977 in Glendale. The cost of living in Glendale will go up, up, up. When does it stop? You have other people, you know, if you say the state's going to pick up the bill, that's taxpayers' money, it's still taxpayers' money. You just heard the Apartment Association representative, representative saying that, hey, landlord's going to have to raise the rents, and then the, then the tenants are going to say, oh my God, rents are going up again. And all the landlord can say, well, blame the city of Glendale, or blame the state of California, or you know better yet? You know, you get the government, you so deserve, you sow what you reap. And when you elect, reelect people like Dan Brotman, Alan Gossatri, Arti Kusake, and even maybe the Jerry, these people are all progressive Democrats, and they want to raise the cost of living in the city of Glendale and the state of California. It's the truth. The Green New Deal, we don't, what happened before the Green New Deal, when we're living on fossil fuel? I thought it was great. Did you know that Bill Gates, the father of the Green New Deal, changed his mind about two weeks ago and say, hey, you know what, it's all a bunch of BS? And here we are, going along with the Green New Deal. I don't want to hear the Green New Deal anymore, I want those fossil fuels, I want- I want to see the gases in the air. This is, you know, it's, it's becoming cost-prohibitive. People are leaving the state of California. I just told you earlier, my niece bought property in Texas. Says Uncle Mike, I can't afford to live in Glendale, pardon me, well, she lived, can't afford to live in California anymore. Fees and taxes, regulations. You think there could be any new jobs coming to California with the cost of living? Trust me, any of these new companies coming to the United States will go to a red state and not a blue state. We cannot, this, this heat pump, destroy it, get rid of it, kill it before it takes legs. Thank you.
Jackie Gish. Right after Jackie Gish, Edmond Hagopian.
Mayor Najarian, city council members. I'm Jackie Gish, and I'm representing the Glendale Environmental Coalition in support of the air conditioning to heat pump ordinance. To me, this is a win-win, a win for the homeowner over the long term or even short term in reducing costs and even maybe more importantly, improving air quality and safety in their homes, and a win for the city and all residents due to less pollution and less greenhouse gases. In particular, the air conditioner to heat pump policy will reduce gas use for space heating significantly without requiring homeowners to replace or even get rid of their furnace at this time. This is important because gas furnaces produce air pollution that contributes to smog and multiple health impacts, including but not limited to breathing ailments. Malfunctioning gas furnaces can cause carbon monoxide poisoning. Reducing gas use will make homes and the community a healthier place to live. Gas use in homes is also one of the major contributors to climate change that cities can have some jurisdiction over. Gas is also explosive and dangerous, so reducing gas use and eventually fully transitioning to electricity will make Glendale homes safer. On a personal note, a couple of years ago, we replaced our very old and very inefficient gas furnace. We had a $600 gas bill one month with a heat pump, which is much more, which is much safer than the gas furnace and less polluting. In the process, we obtained air conditioning, which we did not have before that, and we're really pleased with our decision. One of the major things that caused me to want to do this was feeling that the old furnace was not safe. There was a concern to me about carbon monoxide poisoning, and having this in my basement was a major concern amongst other things. So to say that people care about money, yes, we all care about money, but we all care about clean air too, and the air that we breathe not being toxic. Thanks.
Right after Edmond Hagopian, I have Beth Brooks.
Hi, council members. Last time that there was a discussion on this item, I believe it was Councilmember Arti Kasakian who brought up the LED incorp, LED subsidies for LED light bulbs, and what a great program it has been across the state. I, I want us to kind of follow that. LED, adoption of LED light bulbs in our city has saved a lot, a lot of energy for, and it has become so affordable, it doesn't make sense for us to buy incandescent lights or fluorescent lights. I think we should follow that model for heat pumps. If we, there is an animosity in, in the, in the, in the city and residents towards having this as a mandate. LED light bulbs were never a mandate. So if we can move forward with providing the subsidies, however, not making, making it a mandate, it will allow us to see all those early adopters going in, taking advantage of the program, installing these heat pumps and become advocates for, you know, advocates for the program. And also, I would like you to put a sunset on, on this proposal and review it on a yearly basis to see how many people are using it. Maybe you want to expand it, maybe you want to, you know, you want to end the program. Also, for future proposals like this, I would, I would like you to consider asking Assistant GM manager, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher his name, Chizam Obegulu, to create a, he did a really good job on creating scoring points for future projects for GWP. I think you should, you should, if, if he has time, you should ask him to, looking at all these successful environmental programs such as the LED program, to create a scoring system that would help you market future environmental subsidies policies. And that's, that's what I, I want to ask you to do, to remove the requirement. Thank you.
Right after Beth, I have Michael Rochmuss.
Thank you. Just before I begin, I wanted to say to the, you know, because the speaker said that gas explodes, so do Teslas, so do electric vehicles, so there you go. Forgive me for not trusting Mr. Brotman on his numbers, because I don't think that he's very reliable, especially when we look at Grayson. What I looked into, apparently 77% of homes in Glendale were built before 1975. They're mostly older, older homes in Glendale. So this isn't about opposing clean energy. This is about the sequence of events and the cost reality. Glendale needs to modernize their grid before mandating technology that actually triples the costs for owners, because as we know, gas is so much cheaper than electricity, and it's only going to go up. This is crazy. You're, you don't have the grid that can support it. We're bringing more people in. We have more electrification of buildings, more EV chargers. It's just one burden after another, and this is going to get worse. In a like-for-like air conditioner replacement, that's what I, where the owner keeps the existing gas furnace, furnace, and the heat pump retrofit, retrofit, what I found was for, for a 2,000-square-foot home that was built before 1975, that it would triple the cost. It would force a switch from a failed, yeah, to a heat pump. Hold on, hold on, because this is a little technical for me. While the equipment price can be similar, older homes need electrical and duct upgrades to make a heat pump work properly. Upgrading to 200-amp service can cost $3,000 to $6,000, and duct sealing or resizing can add another $2,000 to $5,000. And if you talk about the rebates, first of all, you don't know how long that fund will, will last. This is a lot of money to give people. I mean, this is thousands of dollars. I know that some people are house-rich and cash-poor, so they would need that money. But you're also diverting money that, in the public benefit charge, that could still be used. I know you give money to low-income people for electric, electric bills, but still, you could use it for that. I just think that this could be a pilot program. You could check it out with people who want to do it voluntarily. You could study what they say over the next year to see if this works for them, to see what their actual real costs, did their real cost go down? That's what I think. I think it would be a good idea to actually have a, a pilot program, and I don't have time to read, you know, everything else, but I don't think that the grid is ready for all this. I really don't. Maybe in a year, maybe in a few years, you know, after Grayson is up. I don't know, but it just doesn't seem like this makes sense now, and I think a pilot voluntary program would make much more, much more sense. Thank you.
Right after Michael, I have Kate Unger.
Thank you, council members. My name is Michael Rochmuss, and I'm with the U.S. Green Building Council of California. First, I want to thank Mr. Jones for his work on this item. USGBC California supports the AC-to-heat pump reach code because it will save homeowners money, it'll save duplex owners money, it'll improve the air quality, and it'll, will reduce climate pollution. Heat pumps are simply better appliances than air conditioners. Heat pumps are proven technology, they've been studied, they've outsold fossil fuel furnaces by 26% in the U.S. so far this year. Heat pumps are essentially ACs with the addition of a simple reversing valve that allows them to work in either direction. Heat pumps provide pollution-free cooling, like an efficient AC, and pollution-free heating, which is why they're also referred to as two-way ACs. A conventional one-way AC has been compared to a car without a reverse gear. If I bought a car without a reverse gear, that would be a lemon. But we've accepted it with air conditioners because that's the way it's always been. But heat pumps are better. They can do both, they provide twice the value. They're also a drop-in replacement for conventional one-way AC, meaning they don't require additional space, additional electrical capacity, or additional ducting. Also, a right-sized heat pump is more comfortable than a gas furnace, since gas burns at more than 1,000 degrees Fahrenheit. That heat transfers to the air circulating through the heat exchanger, causing the supply vent air to enter the room at around 150 degrees. So thus, it's cycling on and off and on and off, hot, the air that's too hot, and then there's no air. Heat pumps are more flexible and can keep a constant, comfortable temperature. The AC-to-heat pump reach code doesn't require people to get rid of their furnace, but by encouraging purchase of a heat pump, it protects people from needing to buy a new furnace when there's breaks. So if you own a duplex and you get a heat pump now, when the furnace breaks, you don't need to replace it. That's going to save a lot of money. Okay? And people might want to keep their old furnace for backup heating. There are, there are cold-temperature heat pumps, but they cost more. So in a place like Glendale, you get a regular heat pump. If it's the few hours of the year where it's freezing outdoors, the furnace kicks on. Otherwise, you don't, the furnace isn't being used. Thank you.
Kate, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Kate Unger, Mayor Najarian, members of city council and staff. I really appreciate you taking the time to consider this reach code. We've talked about it before. I'm happy to talk about it again. It is a sensible and modest approach with a lot of upside for residents. It offers cost savings. It offers improved comfort. Heat pumps are more comfortable than furnaces. It offers increased safety, including air quality, and it offers greater reliability. Why is the reach code helpful? Because many residents don't know what they don't know about heat pumps. They don't know about their benefits. Many installers often push residents to just do what they already know. They want the easy sale. They're less comfortable with heat pumps because they haven't been installing them. But this ordinance would change that because it would increase installs in heat pumps. Installers will become more comfortable with it. So it has a consumer protection aspect for that reason. And I worry that some people are reacting out of fear of the unknown and a false story that the ordinance will increase costs for people. It's not true. There is some upfront higher cost, but it's more than made up for, so that life, life cycle total cost savings are at least $2,000. It's a no-brainer. There is, there are some rebates that will address the gap upfront, and so there's no additional cost, and those rebates will not add costs to Glendale residents. Those are fees that are already being collected, the majority of which, I believe, already go back to low-income, or at least, I think, half go back to low-income customers as it is. And if there's an electric panel upgrade needed or anything else that increases the cost, electric panel upgrade is specifically accepted from the reach code. If the, if the electric panel upgrade is needed for the, for a heat pump and not for an AC, you don't have to do the heat pump, plain and simple. So I really hope that you all will pass the reach code. It is something that the city can be proud of. We should be leaders, we should be thinking ahead, thinking about what we need for the future, and this is a really good thing for the city to do. Thank you so much.
So, Mayor? Yes?
Is that, Mr. Jones, is that correct? If your panel does not support a heat pump, you don't have to, you don't have to replace it because your panel may not support it?
So the general exception reads as follows. Where the capacity of the existing main electrical service panel is insufficient to supply the electrical capacity of a heat pump sized to meet the heating load, it would then be exempt.
Heating load?
Correct. That's how it's written.
Okay.
Mayor, I still have two more callers. Okay, go for it. Vivian Cha-Chian. Vivian, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, council members. So let's just call this latest push, this time for AC heat pumps, what it is. You will own nothing, and you'll be happy, as proclaimed by the World Economic Forum. Make no mistake that Mr. Brotman did not land here in Glendale accidentally. He came here to do what Mom Donnie wants to do to New York City, to force high-density, Soviet-style housing, reduce safety and quality of life so that residents are too busy fighting each other, while his overlords, net-zero ideas chip away at our paychecks, our time, and our personal freedoms with all sorts of nonsensical mandates like this one, calling for electrification. Unfortunately, the rest of this council, with the exception of Mr. Garpetian, has fallen in line with him. We do not consent to these intrusive and overreaching policies designed to make the lives of hard-working people even more difficult than they already are, hoping they will be forced to sell their land. That's called a land grab, which is what you are always going on about at the beginning of your council meetings when you pretend to pay your respects to the Tongva tribe. What have you actually done for the Tongva tribe, the pay lip service? Let me repeat, we do not consent.
I think this, Cole Beazemore?
Yes, Cole Beazemore. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members and staff. My name is Cole Beazemore, and I'm calling in tonight to support the proposed AC-to-heat pump reach code ordinance. I'm a strong supporter of heat pumps because they are, as mentioned several times already, more energy-efficient than conventional AC and gas furnaces, and they also provide both heating and cooling in one system. This will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, improve indoor air quality, and save residents money over time. I really want to underscore the value. Heat pumps are two to four times more efficient than traditional AC and gas furnaces, and they can cut a home's heating-related carbon emissions by 40 to 60%, and lower annual energy bills by hundreds of dollars. One system provides both heating and cooling, making them a smart, future-ready investment. The other good news is that heat pumps perform efficiently even in the hottest and coldest days we see in Glendale. When properly installed, they can lower peak electricity demand and reduce strain on the grid. Thank you for your time and for considering this important step toward a cleaner, more resilient future of our city. Thank you.
Mayor, that is all the callers. We're going to go to five minutes for each council member. Who would like to go first?
Questions.
I'm gonna...
Do you have, I have questions.
Oh, I don't have questions.
I have questions.
The sitter.
Mrs. Sarkisian, can you, our building and safety director's here, so if you can please Good evening.
Good evening.
Under the general exemptions that we have currently listed for this item, were these things that the Sustainability Office went through with your office for suggestions? Or are there things that are missing from the exemptions that you think we should be taking into consideration?
Good evening. So at the beginning, we were presented the draft. We had our comments from Building and Safety. Unfortunately, I didn't get any response to my comments.
So, Mr. Jones, you, so you submitted your...
Yes.
Findings. Are his findings in your report, Mr. Jones?
I can't remember what the findings were. So what is in the report is the exemptions that were recommended to us from the local energy codes standards team if you develop such an ordinance.
Okay, so all of the recommendations that were provided by Mr. Sarkisian and the Building and Safety to ensure that this is efficient is included in this?
So I don't want to, I can't remember... So I don't want to, I can't remember a list of recommendations from Mr. Sarkisian, so I'd have to review my emails. And if I didn't respond, I sincerely apologize to him for not responding.
I'll wait.
Mr. Sarkisian, do you have your, any chance you can pull up that email?
Unfortunately, I wasn't...
Prepared to...
Instructed to be prepared for today's presentation.
I apologize for putting you on the spot. I just saw you in the back, and so I naturally...
And thank you for calling me here because after all, this is the building official's responsibility to enforce this law anyway the council decides. Whether you pass this law or you don't pass, still, it's going to be under my jurisdiction to enforce this law. That's why I wanted to here to see which way council will go. But if the council desires, I can go back and resubmit my comments back to Sustainability Office, and we can discuss this.
Okay, so, Mr. Jones, if you had not seen Mr. Sarkisian's email, what recommendations and from whom, from the building, are included in your report and in your recommendations?
So as Mr. Sarkisian said, we sent a draft of the reach code to his office for comment. I guess he did respond with comments. But beyond that, there was no other communication with his office.
No, so, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask this. You sent the draft, correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. He sent a response to your draft.
Correct.
Did you send the draft to him for comments?
Yes.
Okay, so he gave you comments. Are his comments or anybody from Building and Safety, are they included in your report, sir?
I'm just trying to find the email to answer that question properly. So if you bear with me?
Of course.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Galan.
I think I'll be appropriate to ask Mr. Sarkisian the details of his comments. I'm told that primarily was his concern about enforcement of the rules.
I can, if I may?
Yes, mister.
So I'm sorry for not being prepared again, but...
I'm sorry for putting you on the spot. We should have had that conversation prior to the meeting.
I look at the laws of physics. I'm an engineer, so I am looking at everything from the standpoint of the laws of thermodynamics and physics. So one of my comments was referring to 2023, back in this power control label that City of Glendale has. For some reason, no one mentions about this. That's the amount of the percentage of the electrical energy City of Glendale buying and percentage of the fuel or sources being used for that energy. So one of the numbers I want to bring to, for example, for 2024, just recently came in. So in order to produce electrical power here to bring to Glendale, somewhere in Utah or somewhere else, they burn gas to convert to electricity to bring to Glendale and use that electricity in Glendale. And laws of physics say that energy is not being created or destroyed. It's just from one form converting to another form. So when we burn gas to generate electricity, we are losing lots of energy there. So pollution, heat, and all that stuff. So my point was that if the goal is to not burn gas and save the planet, then why are we using the electricity that is generated by burning gas? If I compare with the California utility average, they are showing 10% of the only sources used as a gas. Glendale has 34%. That was one of my comments, very general.
So, Mr. Sarkisian, if I can help guide what I'm looking for here. We have certain general exemptions that are part of this ordinance that's in front of us today. My question is, as you were hearing the discussion and you're seeing the general exemptions, provided that you deal with this and your office deals with this on a daily basis, are there any, is there anything that sticks out that's missing from those exemptions that you think should be incorporated?
First of all, it will create more of a problem with enforcement for the reason, we have all these exemptions. We have the R49 insulation requirement and so on and so on. So in order to comply with an exemption, the homeowner or the designer needs to provide so much of information to prove that they are subject to exemption. Hearing so much about complaints about Building and Safety being complicated, and I'll bring two examples. Last week here at this council, there were two mentions about subterranean parking and definition of commercial mixed use. Both of them are not, neither of them is related to Building and Safety. But for some reason, everybody is pointing Building and Safety, Building and Safety. Let's make it clear, these are not building safety issues. And if today this council is going to make a decision to come up with another reach code in addition to California standards, it makes more complicated my job to satisfy this council to make sure that our customers are getting easy service because we are asking something in addition to what entire California is asking. That's enforceability side. Now, talking about the exceptions, we are looking at electrical panel that needs to be upgraded. Now, someone needs to prove that this electrical panel cannot be upgraded. That means that extra plan check for us to look at the justification of engineer to see if really, and working with Water and Power, to see if this panel is needed to upgrade it or not needed to be upgraded, or it's feasible or not feasible. No one mentions about, actually, thank you, Councilmember Garbedian mentioning about the space. So it's easy to say, oh, I'm going to replace this with another appliance, and it's going to work perfectly fine. In many cases, you need to enlarge your closet and make smaller room. Relocation of a wall, it creates a problem, not a problem, but it's extra work for homeowners. And there are so many other things. No one mentions about that some of this, for example, water, electrical water heaters or any appliances, they are working with a certain warranty and their lifetime expectancy is not necessarily same as being predicted at this point. And the price is the way I see, also, I don't want to go there, so I don't want to say, for enforceability, I'm having issues. For enforceabilities, I will need more time to check the plans. And you will hear complaints that why Glendale is asking something different than other neighboring cities.
So...
We already heard that, right, sir?
Okay, let's be a little more specific. We've gone quite a long time.
I recognize that, but I'm asking, so as an example, I think somebody mentioned something about duplexes, right? They're, the heat pump not aligning with the larger system, which is different, and then they would have to pay. So I'm looking for just the, or homes that are built after a certain year versus like 1974 versus 1972, 1968, whatever that date is. I'm saying like, when you're looking at these general exemptions, is there something that pops out to you that says like, hey, you should probably include this general exemption? But when you talk about panels and stuff, I mean, if you have a panel, I know what my panel load is. I know what I'm going to be replacing it with. It doesn't require much for me to be able to tell whether or not I'm going to be needing to replace the panel and I'm able to get the exemption. So what I'm looking to you for, if any, is are there general exemptions that you would consider here?
To add?
Correct.
Well, it's up to this council to decide how many exceptions you are going to present and how many, so to me, it doesn't make any difference. But the problem I am having, not a problem, but we will do anything you decide. But it will create more work for us to find the compliance or review the plans or projects to make sure that they are in compliance with the code. So it's up to you how many new exemptions you will add or remove the exemptions. Any set of rules you provide, we are going to work with that. It will be a little bit tough to enforce in some cases. It will take more time-consuming. But then you will hear complaints about Glendale being more...
Mr. Sarkisian, I think you made that point clear, so...
Let me ask a question, if I can. So you're saying it's more work for you. Does more work for you mean a longer wait for the customer?
That's right.
And when people are considering the heat pump or this whole issue, it's usually only after there's a failure of their existing heat pump or their existing furnace or whatever. So if your furnace breaks, you're going to come to the city, and according to our code, you're going to have to upgrade to the system here. And if you're going to delay the approval for either the exceptions or going through that, they're going to be without heat during that period. Is that correct? For a longer period of time than if they were just replacing it with a gas furnace?
Pretty much, yes, because currently I can issue an instant permit, like to like, in two seconds.
All right, I just wanted to understand. I don't want to, I know there's a lot maybe you want to talk to us about.
In order for the owner, yeah, in order for the owner to prove that they can comply with any exceptions, they need to provide some documentations, calculations, and we need to review those.
Understood, thank you.
Wouldn't they be able to bring that with them anyway? If it's part of the list of exemptions?
Yeah, but someone needs to review that. It's not like checklist items saying yes or no, yes or no. Doing energy analysis for entire building itself, it's a set of calculations and needs to be reviewed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sarkisian, unless there's other questions.
I do have, I have a question on the, if you've, not to you, Mr. Sarkisian.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Well, let me ask Mr. Sarkisian before Ms. Sarkisian goes because we have Mr. Sarkisian here at the podium. Now, again, if this is not something that's specifically in your purview, that's fine. Please just state so. Currently in new construction, do we require water conservation equipment to be installed, like low-flow faucets, toilets, et cetera?
Yes, we do have like 1.8 per flash or 0.8 for shower, yes.
And the purpose of that would be what?
To save the water.
Okay, and which is a good thing generally, correct? I mean, we would all agree, okay. In terms of installing light fixtures, are there any codes or anything that we require for efficiencies, energy efficiencies for lighting in new construction?
Well, there are, but also there are alternatives for design to come up with other solutions.
Sure, and those designs would require time, effort, proof of reliability and efficacy? All right, thank you.
Mr. Garbedian, since we're examining this witness.
No, no, not examining. The issue is, this is for existing homes. If you build a brand-new house, there are rules, and you follow those rules, you submit your plans. You have electrical, mechanical, plumbing, EMP, as they call it, and everything else, you submit, and you pull your permits. This is for existing single-family homes. And you can get over the counter, basically, that's what I heard you said, a permit for existing unit. You said, this is what I have, I want to replace it. But with this calculation, someone has to need to sit and calculate. If they don't want to replace their panel, they have to make the calculation and prove that either that panel serves it or doesn't serve this unit. And it was said, heating load, I don't know what that means. A unit has, is a unit. There's so much efficiency it does have, and so much power it needs based on that. You have to, so you have to do all this calculation. You have to submit, it has to be reviewed. Sometimes there are corrections. It goes back and forth, and that's why it will take time. That's what I think Mr. Sarkisian was indicating. So this is for existing homes, not brand-new buildings. There are no problems, they just follow the...
Right. Okay, thank, do you have any more questions?
Just one more on the, not to you, Mr. Sarkisian.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, before we move off this topic, I just want to close the loop on this email that Mr. Sarkisian claims was not responded to. I believe Jillian van Miden had responded to that email on behalf of David Jones. If that's not true, please...
We'll verify, but I didn't get anything from Sustainability Group. I didn't get an answer.
We're not debating this, Mr. Sarkisian.
I would like to see copies of those emails. Thank you.
Just so I'm clear, and I understand, the relevance is there were comments made to Sustainability that were not responded to. Is that the issue? Okay.
I, so...
I just want to understand.
Look, I don't know what the communication was. I just wanted to, I wanted to know whether or not the comments or whatever was provided was included in the report and part of the decision-making process. The, thank you, Mr. Sarkisian. The rebate for GWP, I think one of my comments was when this item first came was that it would need to be linked up with the application when someone's going to get the permit for the replacements. Have staff figure that part out? How that's going to be?
I'd have to get GWP to respond to that question.
Mr. Calvert, have you and Mr. Mellon?
My apologies, Mayor, council member. Could you repeat the question?
Last time this item was here, we talked about the rebate program and tying it to the application and obtaining a permit. Have you and Mr. Mellon or your office, have you figured out how that's going to be done to ensure that anybody that applies for a permit is aware of the rebate they can...
We have several options. We haven't chosen which one at this point in time, pending the passage or not passage of this this evening. But we have already started working together in terms of how we broadcast and advertise rebate programs across the spectrum in terms of how they relate to Building and Safety, including leaving flyers and other informational items at our public counter. And then how we would move forward with this would depend on the outcome of this evening.
Okay, so my request is going to be that it be tied to the permitting and that it's not just a matter of just flyers and information, but as somebody's coming to pull in the permit, they're also provided the information and the application for the rebate.
Okay. Who wants to go next? No, that's okay, I got into it too. So let's forgive each other and let's sort of go back to the five-minute rule that we were trying to start implementing. So who would like to go next? Either questions or comments? Listen, I think we all know, I think we all know where we are on this issue to some extent or the other. And I would encourage my colleagues to get into their comments and not make their argument through a series of questions because that takes a long time to get to it. Let's just get, let's just get to it. We've gone through this several months ago. We've been thinking about it. That's just an encouragement, a request. You can handle it your own way, but I just, in terms of efficiency.
So, sure, I'll go first and I'll be short, Mayor. So I understand some of the concerns that residents have. But through my questions, what I was trying to show and demonstrate is that there were a lot of things that now we take as for granted in terms of new construction, including remodels of existing structures that are part of what, you know, we have come to implement in California for efficiencies, whether it's water and energy, et cetera. And all of those are, I believe, towards a positive goal, which is to be, to conserve, to save, to not be wasteful. I think that, you know, any of us driving down the city, if we see a broken sprinkler, I certainly, when I see a broken sprinkler just wasting water on the streets of Glendale, it really bothers me because, you know, we know that we live in a place where water is not abundant, and we have to conserve it. Similarly, I mean, we're looking at what this aims to do, which is to make homes more efficient in their use of energy in order to both cool and to heat the homes and buildings. And I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing, especially since we are going to provide the incentives for individuals to be able to offset the costs that would be otherwise incurred where there are not that. I think that it is a... I think that it is, it gives enough choice for homeowners who may have challenges and difficulties. It also is something that we can try and see, and after a year, we can get a report back to see how many people took advantage of this and if it's actually working. So I think that the fear that the sky is falling if this is implemented is not really the case. I'm going to vote for this because I think it is practical, it gives people a choice, it obviously provides a cost savings, and it encourages the more efficient, conservative use of energy instead of it being wasteful. It specifically says if you can't do it, then, you know, your home has to be in a way that is saving energy or not wasting it, which is good for the homeowner as well. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you for being concise and direct. Who would like to go next? Mr. Brown?
I'll go, and I'll try to be concise and direct too. So I'm going to support this, of course. I think it's a win-win. As one of the speakers said, it does reduce costs for homeowners. We have analysis that is not our analysis, these are not my numbers, these are numbers from the Energy Codes team, which is a team funded by the state. And these are people that do this for a living, so they understand how to do cost-effectiveness analysis. And this is a cost-savings move, a cost-saving move for residents installing a two-way system. With the rebates that we're giving from GWP, it makes it even more of a no-brainer. So not only without the rebates, this would be cost-effective, although that, there would be an upfront cost and then benefits over time. Now we're taking away the upfront costs, so the homeowner is just getting the benefits over time. So that, those are just the facts. Somebody said, oh, Mr. Murphy just keeps insisting that there's significant upfront costs, when we've showed that there is no upfront cost differential between a like-to-like and a heat pump. So let the record state that. And for all the other reasons, clean air, safety, I think it's a smart move. I do want to say one thing about GWP, because we've had at least one person say, you know, the grid can't handle it. It's actually the opposite. What this does is it reduces electricity demand during the time when GWP is under the most stress and strain to provide power to the city, and those are hot summer afternoons when people are blasting their air conditioning systems. We are now going to have much more efficient air conditioning systems. That means much less load. Of course, this is cumulative, it's going to take time for people to do it, but ultimately, less load on the system, meaning less pressure on GWP to go out and buy energy, which often is dirty energy, and it is often very expensive energy. So this is going to be a benefit not only to the homeowner, not only to their pocketbook, not only to their health, not only to their safety, but also to our whole utility system and helping us deal with our number-one problem, which is peak energy demand. So I think this makes a huge amount of sense, and I do support getting a report back after a year. I think that's a great idea. We should put that on the calendar and see how many of these have been installed, see whether there have been any problems. Let's, you know, let's evaluate, and we can always, if we want, decide that this is not working for us. So let's do that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
I also know where the votes are and how's it going to go. I can predict based on past meetings, but I can't just not say anything. There are two issues with this ordinance. One is the practicality of it and the cost. You keep hearing cost savings, cost savings, it's good for the air quality, it's good for safety. First of all, there are no incidents that I am aware of, and I'm not a big fan of furnaces. I'm not advocating for having furnace. I'm all about having choices. People need to have a choice. If there is a cost-saving or safety issue, or it's better for you, you change your furnace to a heat pump. The government doesn't have to dictate that to you. So the electricity that heat pump uses, as was mentioned, it's generated by gas. You're just transferring the issue of air pollution from here to somewhere else. Many of the homes, I have a split level, I have a furnace. We don't use it much, because in winter time, you know, if your house is insulated, you don't need it that much. So the ducting on the furnace, they said you can have your furnace, keep your furnace, and have a heat pump, and then that would be a backup for your heating. How are you going to set, people who come up with these ideas, they never put a nail in the wall. They never installed one of these. They don't know how these units are installed. How can you have a furnace with all this ducting and have a heat pump with another setup ducting and connect them all together and expect to have efficiency? Efficiency is not only your unit. Efficiency mostly is your windows, too. If you have old windows, you're going to lose your cooling or heating efficiency, because your windows are leaking. It's not only one or the other. It was said that, these are all slogans, that the heat pumps are two to four times more than the split units. There is no such thing. Both units are very efficient when they operate right, when you adjust them right. And for today's purpose, I brought a visual. This is the thickness of R49. This is 16 inches. R49 insulation that is required if you want to keep your furnace and retrofit your house, this is the thickness of it. And show me a house that you can stick this thickness in the attic. There is no way. Most of the old homes, they have flat roofs on half of it, and maybe a monsard roof somewhere else. There is no way you can use this kind of an insulation with this thickness, because you have to compress it in order to squeeze it in, and it will lose its value, insulation value. And your inspector, Mr. Sarkisian's office will not, or whoever comes for inspection will not pass your insulation installation. So the other choices, as I said, choice is important to me. We are taking the state's voluntary requirements and making it mandatory. Why? Where is this emergency? We had 110 replacement that used some of our programs that we have. If you want to do the right thing, give people a choice to just choose for their own homes. You have to replace your panel, you have to replace your electric wiring, you have to retrofit your utility closets. It's going to cost a lot. And also, on the upfront cost that they say, oh, it's nothing, because we get subsidy, whoever does this calculation, I'm not talking about the city offices, Mr. Jones, people who come up, they say, oh, you save $2,000, $3,000 in a lifetime. Just the cost of the R49 insulation that is this thick is $3.10 a square foot, installed it's $6.50. If you have a house of 1,500 or 1,500 square feet, your cost of insulating your attic, just the attic, is going to be almost $10,000. But how about your subfloor? Are you going to insulate that, too? Are we going to require them to do that, too? Because you get a lot of air that, you know, escapes from your floors through your subfloor vents. State, our state is heavily Democrat, one-party rules, 75%, majority rule. They even paused this ordinance until 2031. And now we want to come in and say, no, we have to do this. And, I mean, we can do whatever we want to do. People, if you put them in a corner, they're not going to come and pull permits. They just replace their furnace, and no one will even know, because you take one other, you put the other one in. That's it. And I don't want to put people in that position. Also, your winter bill will go up. Right now, you use gas, it's much cheaper. Winter time, you're going to use a lot more electricity, your winter or fall bill will go up as well. It's, we can have this rosy picture and say this is a great thing. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but give people a choice. If they want to use heat pump, they use heat pump. If not, they keep their furnace. As far as this report, and I want to have an answer to my question that I made, why is it that this report is referring, and there are so many different things that this report refers to, in order to make this work, to justify this move? Why is it that this report is referring to a newly-adopted 2026 Building and Safety Code when it wasn't even adopted when this report was generated?
Councilmember Garpetian, I'll start off, and then Jillian can add whatever context to. So essentially, the item at 8A, the California Building Code and our local amendments, too, those are, that's a code we have to adopt. We adopt it every three years required to. So referring to an old code that we knew we were going to adopt, and that's kind of how we recommended it from the beginning, is like either when we first came, when the staff first came to you earlier in the summer and said you could do it to the 2022 Code Amendment, once that didn't go, we had already told you the other options to bring it back with respect to this code. So we knew that this code was going to be adopted. In what form? You never know, but we knew it was going to be adopted, because it's required by state law to do so. So all this code's do is referring to that code, because we knew it was going to be in place.
Okay. So the other issues are, we went back, the state law says if there is an ordinance, safety element that's passed before June 10, 2025, it can apply to this reach code. If not, it will not. And many places, that's where we went to. We passed that in April 1 of this year, and then we started right away the reach code process. But that element all by itself doesn't hold water, because it's part of the Glendale Adaptation, Climate Adaptation Action Plan, which was passed in August 2025, after the June. It's referring to many different parts of this ordinance, is referring to different dates that it's passed at June 10. I know we are trying to find a loophole, if you will, to squeeze this in somehow, because it came in August and it failed, because it couldn't make the timeline. And we went back, and it came back, and it failed again. Now we're using this safety element. I don't know what the safety element have to do, because if you read the 2003 safety element, that was a totally different definition than what we have today. And as far as the carbon monoxide goes inside your house, every house is, you know, supplied by smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. So no one wants to die from pollution. But again, I know where this is going to go. I'm not going to support this. I can talk about it for hours and tell you how difficult it would be to implement what you want in order to keep your old furnace and retrofit your house to accommodate it. And I don't see the reason. And if the goal is reducing greenhouse gas, you have to have an end result. Tell me, okay, if this many units are replaced, how much greenhouse gas are we reducing? What kind of effect it would go, we will have on Glendale's air and climate change in general? Also, this ordinance says that 25% of the homes have to be retrofitted, existing buildings by 2030. 25% of your, I know they're going to say, oh, this is just a goal or idea, but when this is adopted, this becomes law, this becomes policy. Same way that safety element became policy, now we're using that to pass this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Councilmember Sotirian?
Since my questions were long, I'll keep my comments short. I had noted that my main concern was the cost to the homeowners here, and our rebate program helps solve that issue. I think it's worthwhile for us to explore. I will be supporting this, because it's the right thing to do. And as part of the motion, I would be requesting that there be an automatic report that comes to council in one year, from the time of the adoption of the ordinance, without a council request. That also includes information on how long the permitting took to process, and if it was any different than the previous years, as well as wanting to have the rebate application directly tied with the permit application as part of the implementation of this. So it's short. Is there anything else?
All right. So I've looked this up and down, and I think this is the wrong path for Glendale to give a mandate to our residents, forcing them to put in this heat pump, for many, many reasons. First, there is a high upfront cost, and it's more than just the upfront cost of the unit. There's the upfront cost of the electrician, the panels, and I had no idea that that insulation cost was as high as Mr. Garpetian said it was. Absolutely not addressed in the report, giving all of us and the public a false, starting right out of the bat, it's a false sense of what the true cost is to the customer. Add to that what our building official said. Our building official said it's going to take quite a long time to even go through this whole process. So when your furnace goes out and the little kitties are freezing, your application for a heat pump is going to be making its way through the building department, trying to get approval. Now, if that means nothing, that means nothing to the city of Glendale, an extended period to provide the basic heat for a home, then something's wrong. Because in real estate law, if you don't provide heat to your tenant, your tenant doesn't have to pay his rent. We're asking our families to undergo that long process of getting the approval. As far as the rebates go, I think the rebates are frankly obscene, that we are giving thousands of dollars to multimillion-dollar homeowners, so they can upgrade to the latest FAD. And when I say FAD, there will be something else in five more years, believe me. This heat pump isn't the end-all, to be all. Technology improves. To pay that while residents and renters and those on fixed incomes are turning off their heaters, because they can't afford the electricity and the cost to heat their units. If that doesn't strike the people of Glendale as being wrong, as being unfair, I don't know what is. Oh, but it's in the higher name of saving the planet. I'm sorry. That's just not fair. And if you don't, if you think it's fair, I don't know where your hearts are in this. Secondly, you're going to be using more electricity with a heat pump. We made that discussion, we had that discussion last time, because a heat pump uses electricity to compress the gases, to release the gas, to create the heat, which is then blown through the house with a fan. Furnace doesn't have the need for electricity to create the instant heat. That is done through the natural gas. So that's going to give you a lot higher of an electric bill. There are reports that the heat coming from a heat pump is not sufficient. It's been reported to come out at 105 degrees, whereas the heat coming from a furnace is 120 degrees. There are people, just go and look at product reviews and all that, very dissatisfied with the heat pump production of heat. Next, we're not exactly saving the planet here, because the heat pump uses a refrigerant gas. That gas currently in many of the models is R410A, which, if released, and these things get released when they're serviced or when they go bad, is an extremely dangerous greenhouse gas. So we're adding more of this dangerous refrigerant to our world. The term "more efficient," as I said last time, is a misnomer, and it's a way to fool the public. Because when they say "efficient," Because when they say "efficient," "energy efficient," that is a term used in physics, thermodynamics. It is not an economic term. You're not running it, your cost to run a heat pump is more expensive. And I have the breakdown here if anybody wants that. Based on a 5,000, 5,000 kilowatt heat need with a gas furnace at 95% efficiency and a heat pump at a coefficient of efficiency at 3.0 and an electric cost of $0.30 a kilowatt and a gas cost of $1.50 a therm, it is $250 cheaper each year to heat your house with a furnace. Those are the numbers. I don't know what this, what this group, whatever they call themselves, it's clearly a group that is biased with an agenda. Oh, but it's going to make itself cost-effective over its life cycle. So, Mr. Moh, are you going to be around for 20 years? No offense, you look like you're pretty spry.
I'm 84, six, in six months.
Right? So, so most of the people that are going to be repairing failed furnaces, many of them are going to be seniors on fixed incomes, and we're going to tell them, you're going to have to pay for this higher, more expensive equipment, but don't worry, over 20 years, it's going to work out for you. That's just not fair. This whole thing, this whole thing is not fair. We're getting caught up in our enthusiasm and our zealousness to pursue these green agenda items. This is not the way to pursue it. There's many other ways.
I'm in.
Mr. Moh, I'm not too happy with you either, giving me this quasi, be, anyway. I just don't think it's right. I know where the votes are. No one needs to respond to me. Let's just take the vote and we're just going to see how the residents of Glendale deal with this. Does someone want to make a, do we have issues?
Well, this is just an introduction.
It's just an introduction.
Well, we know how ultimately the vote's going to go. So I think there's no better person to introduce it than Mr. Khan.
Okay, I will introduce the ordinance with Councilmember Asatryan's two requested additions, one review after a year without counsel, yeah, without, without a prior council request, just automatically scheduled to come back in a year.
We'll bring a separate motion for next week's meeting to incorporate that, and then council can adopt it along with the, with the ordinance.
This will be in the, in next week's motion then?
The 18th, yeah.
Or two weeks from now?
Yeah, because right now you're just introducing it.
Okay, but I just want to make sure that we're all clear. And the, and the second one on the rebate was, why don't you repeat that?
So, so the first one would be that within 30 days of, it should come to council with a report within 30 days of the one-year cycle automatically. The second is that the rebate application and information is tied directly to the permit that individuals are going to obtain.
I'm sorry, point of clarification, what kind of report are you looking for after a year?
So after one year, I'm looking at how many applications we had for these to be replaced and how long it took for the applications to be processed.
And any particular challenges that we've experienced, that residents have experienced? Yeah, okay.
It has been introduced with the amendments proposed by Councilmember Asatryan. Okay, great. So let's go to the next item, which is the hearing. Let's go to the hearing on item 10. Because it's 10:15 and I think we're going to run out of time.
And also because the hearing has actually been noticed and it can't.
Asked to be done, yeah, we can.
Correct?
Okay, so please read item 10 in, please.
Mayor, just to let you know, I have 10, I have, sorry, four cards for item number 10A.
Okay, let it rip.
10, Hearing, 10A, Community Development Regarding Report, Public Hearing for Stage Two Final Review for Design Review Case Number PDR 0026932023, to demolish an existing 5,688 square foot commercial building and two surface parking lots located at 820 North Central Avenue, 208 Arden Avenue, and 212 Arden Avenue, and to construct a new 105-unit, eight-story multifamily building with 186 onsite parking spaces and a 3,388 square foot publicly accessible open space. The 36,170 square foot project site is zoned DSB Gateway Downtown Specific Plan Gateway District, one motion to approve Stage Two Design Review Application.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Mayor, General Member of City Council, we're just going to go directly to Eileen Babahani, our senior planner, for presentation of this item.
Okay, before we do, we don't have any conflicts on this as reported?
No, not that, not that I'm aware, yeah.
And I just, I just want to state, I have not met with the applicant since the, ever, the last time I saw this was, was it last year we saw Stage One?
In the fall, yes.
In the fall. I don't have any campaign contributions from them within the 12-month period or outside the 12-month period. I have no property in that area because people like to talk.
Same, Mayor, same. I have not met with the individuals on this particular project, but I believe there were some people, I think they, the individuals proposing this also had proposed a hotel on Central, is that correct?
Indigo.
Indigo, yeah. And that was a while back, so I've met with them, just not on this item, and it's been at least two, three years since we've had any conversations, so.
Who's that applicant?
The name is here. It's after the designs.
See here? You haven't donated to me, have you? I don't know who my, I mean, I've asked this a million times to our city attorney for, I don't know who's, the list is very long, so I just want to make sure that. Okay, all right. I don't know who you are.
The campaign disclosure is included with the report.
Okay, okay.
They've said they have no donations.
And for the record, I have not met with.
Yeah, I have not met with them.
Okay, good, so we're all, we're all above board.
Yeah.
And this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. And we'll go to Ms. Babahani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Galanian, and City Council members. So we have the case for tonight for the project, Stage Two Final Review for the project, address at 820 North Central, 208 and 212 Arden Avenue. A little bit of Design Review Case Number PDR 0026932023. The project site is 36,170 square feet. It is located in the Downtown Specific Plan Getaway District. The project site consists of three adjacent parcels, and it is located at the southeast corner of Central and Arden Avenue. The site is located in the Downtown Specific Plan, as I mentioned, and the Getaway District is mostly to the north part of the Downtown Specific Plan, where there are some high-rise development, including some corporate buildings. On this slide, you can see the existing condition of the site, view looking from Arden Avenue, looking south, and also view from Central Avenue, looking east. For the properties surrounding the project site, we have across Arden Avenue, the one-story restaurant with parking lots, and also the 19-story hotel. Adjacent to the project site, directly to the south, we have another hotel. To the east side, adjacent to the project site, we have five-story parking structure. And across Central Avenue, we have some commercial buildings, including one-story gas station. The developer, Arden Residence LLC, is proposing to demolish an existing 5,688 square foot commercial building, which is a vacant restaurant, along with the two existing parking lots in order to construct a new 105-unit, 131,846 square feet, eight-story residential building with the overall height of 95 feet. The project will provide 186 parking spaces within the ground floor and two levels of subtrain and parking garage. The proposed building is rectangular in shape and almost occupies the entire building site. It provides 3,388 square foot publicly accessible open space, which will be located at the southwest corner of the site. The project is required to provide minimum of 197 parking spaces, and it is utilizing the AB 2097 provisions to reduce the total parking spaces to 186. The parking counts include 120 standard parking spaces and 66 tandem spaces. Vehicle access to the underground and two level of subtrain and parking garage will be located from Arden Avenue. The project includes a one-studio unit, 23 one-bedroom units, and eight one-bedroom units within, and 73 two-bedroom units. On this slide, you can see the proposed site planning of the project. The project complies with the building setback requirement for the DSP, which requires a minimum of 18-foot setback along Central and Arden Avenue from the street curb. For the project review background, the project was reviewed and approved by City Council as Stage One on November 12, 2024. The overall site planning, massing, and design of the project remain unchanged from Stage One review. Also, the count of the units, 105 units, will remain unchanged. However, the parking design has been revised, and under the current proposal, the project, as I mentioned, is using AB 2097 provision to reduce the total parking spaces, which was originally proposed to be 215 parking spaces to 186, as is proposed now. Basically, the project is removing one level of subtrain and parking garage. Originally, it was three level of subtrain and parking garage. With the current proposal, we have two level of subtrain and parking garage. Also, the square footage of the project has increased from 129,640 square feet to 131,846 square feet. Additionally, the unique unit breakdown also has been modified from the previously reviewed and approved configuration. In the previous project, we had six three-bedroom units, but in, in this current proposal, we don't have three-bedroom units. On June 26 of this year, the Advisory Design Review Board concurred with the City Council of Stage One approval and supported the City Council approval and provided comments that exterior lighting for this project shouldn't be excessive and very light, very bright commercial or service type users, service type users to be added to the project, and also a project to add a top-level balcony on the left side of the north elevation to be similar to those at the corner feature on the right side. The design has been revised in response to these comments. It, it added a top-level balcony on the left side of the north elevation. Also, the project will not produce excessive lighting. However, the applicant decided not to include any commercial or service type users to the project. For the CQ review, it is exempt as Class 33 infill exemption, and also the project is subject to Housing Accountability Act because it is a residential project and provides market rate units. This project is in compliance with the DSP design standard as outlined in the staff report. The project meets the floor, floor, floor area ratio and overall height. In fact, it is under the limit of the floor area ratio and overall height as it's required for the Getaway District in DSP. The project also meets the requirement for the open space by providing 3,388 square foot publicly, publicly accessible open space. Also, it provides a total of 15,376 square foot of residential open space in the form of private residential balconies and a pulpit at the second floor.
I'm sorry, how much was that?
Total open space for the resident will be 15,376 square feet.
That's private open space.
That's for the private open space. The detailed landscape plans and improvements to the public right of way and programming of the publicly accessible open space are provided in Exhibit One in the drawings, Pages L0 to L2, and they are in compliance with the DSP requirements. The project complies with the DSP's massing and scale for the modulation of height and facade modulation, as it proposes. A corner feature also provides defined base, middle, and top for the building facades, represented by different materials and colors and design feature. This contemporary, modern design of the proposed eight-story residential project fits within the, within its urban context in the DSP Getaway District, which includes more streamlined development in the area, and also it is appropriately articulated and designed for its location. On this slide, we have the north facade facing Arden, we have the south and west facade, and also the west and south facade through the 3D rendering, you can see that on the slide. Here, we have the rear facade or east facade, and also the facade facing Arden, which is the north facade. The project features high-quality and varied building materials, various colors, textures, and details such as recessed and visible entrances, recessed balconies, uniforms, and divided larger windows, and also canopies. These characters and features create a design that is unique for its location. The night rendering view on this slide shows the lighting system for the project. And since the project is in compliance with the zoning and design standard outlined in the report, based on the DSP requirement, staff recommends that City Council approve the Stage Two for this proposed project. With that, I conclude my presentation. Staff is available for any question.
Thank you. We do have cards from the applicant. Is there something from the applicant? Mr. Khan, how much time would you need to present?
Mr. Mayor, we'll take only two minutes, three minutes. We have a very brief presentation, so.
I'll give you five.
Perfect.
So you can start when you're ready.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are here in the city of Glendale. I'll start out by saying our project is very straightforward. It's a well-designed project in an area of the city where high-density residential should be built. Our design complies with all the objective design standards for the Gateway District and the Downtown Specific Plan. We require no concessions, and we require no waivers. Our architect is here, the property owner is here as well, to be able to answer questions. I don't want to be redundant and repeat what the staff has already said, so I'll just simply conclude my remarks on that, and if you have questions for myself or the architect, we're able to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. While you're up there, are there any questions?
Well, not necessarily for the applicant, but for staff. Given everything that's been coming at us from the state, if the applicant had chosen to take advantage of everything, what is the maximum amount of units that could have been put on this site?
207.
207 units? All right, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Khan.
Thank you.
Next card?
Mayor, I do have the architect here if you want to.
Yes, if you'd like to address.
Good evening. My name is Ron Mondalian. I represent Urban Design Specialists, the architects for the project. I think the- I think the presentation was very detailed, so I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of the architect? Not currently, thank you.
Mayor, I have three cards. I'm going to start with Mr. Mohill, Mike Mohill. Here's number one, and then Edgimin Hagopian, you're the second one. Mayor, would you like to give him three minutes or five minutes?
Three minutes.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. The other evening, I drove by this piece of property, the old Conrad Restaurant, and I saw the sign, and as I looking at the sign, the number of units, I said to myself, gee, will they have any condos here? And I said, I was wondering how much green grass is going to be there also. So, a few minutes ago, I was outside in the lobby, and I spoke with Mr. Rodney Khan about the issue. He said, Mr. Mohill, developers cannot afford to put in condos. I said, what do you mean? We need homeowners. We need stakeholders to be in the city, not renters. Don't get me wrong, we were all renters at one time. He says, Mr. Mohill, the liability is too great for the developer to put in a condo. So, in the DSP area, we're going to have nothing but renters and no families, no families going to be in that area. The law must be changed, either at the city level or the state level, because to have no homeowners, that's not good for the health of the city. It looks like a beautiful building with a lot of amenities, whatever, okay? But there won't be any families there. Is that what we want? No families? We're a city without families. Families all have to live up in the hills as homeowners, and then this council wants to destroy the single-family homeowners with SP seventy-nine and the BRT. That's all part of destroying, okay, residential neighborhoods. So the state of California is going to have nothing but apartments. Homeowners are going to be squeezed out. Is this what the progressive liberal Democrat in Sacramento want? The lefties? This will be the comment, you think what happened in New York today with the new mayor? California is next. This used to be called the golden state when I was born in nineteen forty-two. The gold is gone. It's gray, graying, grayer every day, and there's a dark cloud over the city of Glendale, unfortunately. Thank you.
I have Edgimin Hagopian, then I have Alan Durham.
On that note, why don't you cheer us up a little bit?
City of no families. I can't. You can't help with that. I do support high-quality, high-residential buildings in the DSPA area with the community decided to have. I was paying attention to the comments of the council members last time, and I also made a comment in regards to the objective design standards. Would it be possible for the city to come up with objective design standards where the first level of the building can be a commercial area or amenities? Because as you mentioned, I'm going to give you the north-central part, it's kind of a dead zone. It's all walled off, there's no human activity, and if we want to have commerce, make it more walkable, encourage people to live in a condensed area, and the topic of grocery stores came up last time. If we change our standard and make it into a requirement that the first floor should be commercial or also have green space, maybe with additional second floor to be optional as a conversion of space where it can be converted easily into offices or residential, these are ideas that I'm sharing with you. For future projects, or if there is a room for this project to be amended, you could consider adding these elements to the buildings. Thank you.
Mayor Najarian, council members, I'm Alan Durham. I support this project. I'm all for additional housing in Glendale. To address Mr. Mohill's comments, for people who may not know, the law would have to change in Sacramento. The ten-year liability for developers of condos is a state law, which would need to be amended or changed for us to get more condos. But this project, as opposed to the Sears project a week or two ago, I think the developer and the architect have been very responsible. They have taken comments from the city and the Design Review Board and actually implemented at least most of them, unlike the Sears building, where after three years, the developer did nothing, did not address council comments or DRB comments at all. Also, this is in the right place. You know, there are two hotels nearby, office building, it's, you know, a high-density area that's perfect for a large, multi-unit residential building, and I think it's great that there are seventy-three two-bedrooms. We're getting a lot of rental projects that are just studios and one-bedrooms. So we have a lack of two-bedroom units. The design is really excellent. It's followed all the rules about facade modulation, corner details, and trying to make it as attractive as possible from the street on Central. So I fully support this because it's another hundred and five living units, and it's in the right place, and it's been designed responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the last card, and I have no callers for this item.
Okay, Mr. Kusakian.
I agree with what Mr. Durham said when he was at the podium, to the point as to the unit mix and, you know, who is going to move in here. It's not for families. I actually do appreciate that there are a majority two-bedrooms out of the hundred and five units. Seventy-three of them are two-bedrooms, and so if you're a young family, you're just starting out, you have a kid, this is exactly the kind of place you're going to try and rent as you aspire to achieving that American dream of homeownership. You know, again, more modern design isn't necessarily what I gravitate towards, but this is, I think, you know, thoughtfully done in terms of in comparison to others that have been brought to us or that have been constructed, and my main concern is the quality of materials because I know I had a conversation with Mr. Bradley earlier today. I was talking about some of the prior construction on Central and how some of those buildings already are starting to show their age long before they should have. And so as long as we can ensure that this is going to hold up, I think it is a nice design for a modern design, and I do appreciate the considerations that the property owner has made in terms of unit type, amount of units versus what, you know, they could have done, perhaps had they decided to go full Sacramento on us, let's use that term, I suppose, and all of the other things that were done thoughtfully. I will say, I think like many people in Glendale, I miss Conrad's. Spent many, a late night there after being out on the weekends when I was in college, one of the few twenty-four-hour open places, but change is inevitable, and if we're going to have change, this is as good as anything we could possibly have in this location. So I'd support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kusakian?
Councilwoman Kusakian took most of my comments, so I'm not going to repeat them. Just say thank you for being thoughtful in both your design and the way that you've built out the units. And I do have to make a comment to Mr. Mohill. If you go to any of the apartment buildings, just because... Can you hear me now? All right. Just because someone is a renter doesn't mean that they don't have a family, and I wish that more families actually were able to afford to buy a home. This is me talking to you. So I would really appreciate, because I think sometimes you mean well by the comments you make, but I don't think you recognize that the people that are listening in, who are renters, who are most of the residents in this city, are taking offense to your comments. You're basically telling them they're less than, and I'm pretty sure that if people could afford to purchase a home, they would, Mr. Mohill.
Of course.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess I'll make my comments. Well, I do, let me, can I ask a question? We haven't closed the hearing yet, right? So I just want to ask a question about the retail, you know, I think the fact that Conrad's was there, at least in my case, maybe all of ours, it would have been nice to see something down there, retail-oriented, but what was the thinking about, you know, why that wouldn't work? I don't know if that's really from the architect's point of view, maybe more a business question, but why would that not fit in?
We considered that in the beginning. We tried different versions of this, of course, but at the end, we decided to provide more amenities for the residents rather than open commercial space. And our entire frontage is a large gym. We have a large rec room. We have a big concierge lobby area, plus we have a big common pool area. So that was the decision between studying what's better for the residents, and it was amenities.
It wasn't so much about an analysis that retail would not work there?
That too, yeah. So it is not the most walkable area of the city, and it has, it's not connected to other walkable areas, so people will not go through the hotel area to get to any space there. And if we would do a coffee shop or a little restaurant, it would be just used mostly by the residents, and we figured that we'd rather provide amenity for them than a commercial space.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thanks. I mean, that's, you know, I would, I wish we had some retail there, but I understand that that's not something we can require. So based on everything I've seen, you know, the design and the density, I think it's good, and I'll support it.
Thank you. Mr. Garpatian?
Thanks. Couple of questions for staff. Right now, they're providing one hundred and eighty-six parking spaces.
That's your question?
Yeah.
Councilmember? Yes, they're providing one hundred eighty-six parking spaces.
So if, let's say a miracle happened, and this insurance liability issue went away, and they wanted to build it as condos, how many parkings would they need? One ninety-seven? I think we talked about this, that's why I was...
They will need additional eleven parking spaces.
So one eighty-six, it would be one ninety-seven. So one thing I want to suggest is maybe look into it to see if you can squeeze another eleven parking spaces in your development, because we had, that's something that I brought up in the past and never got an answer. We had passed ordinances to incentivize condo developments by reducing the city fees, some of the development impact fees, to offset the cost of builder's liability insurance. And I don't know where we are on that, and I'd like to get an answer sooner than later because this is, I think, maybe the third time I'm bringing this issue up to understand how can we incentivize the developers to build condominiums in Glendale as well. One other question, is it a requirement, is this considered a mixed-use project?
Councilmember, this is not a mixed-use project.
Which areas of, this is Gateway District, right?
Yes.
Which areas of DSP has, is a mixed-use that they have to provide some retail component?
So commercial mixed-use streets are Colorado, Broadway, and Central Avenue. So that's the designation in DSP for those streets to be mixed-use, to have the capacity to, basically for the future development of mixed-use project. But the DSP does not require the projects along those streets to be mixed-use. Residential project without any commercial component can also be proposed along those streets.
Councilmember Garpatian, really all of downtown is considered mixed-use. It can include a commercial or residential and whatever balance. The street designation references that Ms. Babacani's noting there is that there were classifications that we created back in 2019 to encourage certain types of development along the street frontage, where we saw maybe it was more appropriate to have maybe a walk-up residential unit, or we wanted commercial activity. There's a number of challenges, though, where we can't require that. We had concerns regarding legality of that, but also at the same time, if we require a commercial space and maybe the market didn't demand it, or the location didn't demand it, we would end up with vacant spaces, and we really didn't want to see those empty storefronts. So therefore, we have alternatives or options, if it's maybe the amenity, the gym or the entrance, whatever it may be, to try to encourage some sort of active uses is what we really tried to move towards, less than just commercial uses.
Yeah, because I think that the main goal of downtown specific plan was to activate that downtown area, which was not active enough, and if you don't have any retail, it's just the, you know, the way it is right now, some of these developments that were built, there is no, even at night, when you want to walk around, there is nothing to go to. So all of these residents come down on Central Avenue, for example, if they don't walk down to, I don't know, Galleria or Americana, there is nothing on Central. I think that's something we need to look into if you want to activate that street. And sometimes we hear that we want to bring coffee shop here and a market there to have people to walk to a place. This is kind of like counterintuitive. It's just, here, I think the corner would have been a great location for a restaurant. I understand they've done their, you know, their numbers, and it makes sense to them, but I think the restaurant worked there. It was a restaurant, it could have been a great restaurant, or retail. I mean, all of these developments, sometimes they put a little small retail in a huge development, and they call it a mixed-use, and that is not a mixed-use. I mean, it's just, I don't want to mention any development, but we all know what I'm talking about, in general. Thank you, Mr. Khan, thank you. So I'm in favor of this project too. Also, what was it? What did you call it? Sacramento? They didn't go Sacramento on us?
They didn't go full Sacramento.
Yeah, full Sacramento on us, and I think this is a... Sorry?
I said, don't blame the city.
The city of Sacramento? I mean, full Sacramento legislature.
Well, I think this is, when sometimes we talk about responsible developments, this is one of them. They could have gone two hundred and seventy-five feet, they could have done two hundred and seven units, or two hundred and, I don't know, fifty units. Their FAR is three-point-six-five instead of seven-point-two-five. They didn't try to squeeze every square foot out of this location to make it, you know, have more units, and the fact that the unit mix is great, and also I was looking at the size of the units, the two bedrooms, most of them are over eleven-hundred square feet. The one-bedrooms are seven-hundred square foot plus. This is a good, when you talk about quality of life, this is the type of development we want. And also as far as parking goes, they have parking for every unit and more. They're hundred and five units, they're providing one hundred and eighty-six parking spaces. And most importantly is the private open space. The private open space you mentioned is fifteen thousand square feet?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Around fifteen thousand three hundred.
No, I mean, let's round it up. So it's about, it's about hundred and five square foot open space per unit, when the minimum is forty-nine, and some projects come in and provide one-tenth of what they require to do. So when you talk about quality of life, it's parking, it's open space, it's the size of the units, it's the design of the project, it's the location, of course. So I want to, I want to... I wanna, I support it, but please look into that 11 extra parking space, see if you can squeeze it somewhere. I know you took one floor out. If something changes in the future, you decided to convert it into condos, because this is being built as brand-new, it could be converted into condos, and this would be 105 units, so. And also, Mr. City Attorney or City Manager, when can we have that, the incentives that we had, we passed an ordinance, I remember that, to reduce the cost of development impact fees to accommodate condo developers, and there were one or two projects that were built based on that ordinance. I know that for sure. So, let's have an answer for our next meeting, please.
I'm sorry, downtown member Garpetian, what is the question?
The question is, we had, we passed an ordinance to incentivize condo development.
Okay.
And the way to do it was because, yes, the cost of builder's liability insurance is high, we decided to incentivize the development of condos by reducing their fees, the city fees, some of the development impact fees, some other, maybe, plan check fees.
Okay.
But I know that there are two projects that went through based on that.
Okay.
So, I need to have an answer. I brought this up, like, maybe...
I'm sorry, the question is, which project?
No, the question is, what is that ordinance? What is per-unit incentive that we have for condos?
Mayor and councilmembers, we will put together a memo addressing that. It is an older ordinance that we have, but we'll draft up a memo and circulate it to council to explain the details and how that worked. It wasn't necessarily around fees or other incentives, but we'll get that out to you sometime next week.
Okay. All right. That's all I have, thanks.
I don't, I don't recall that we had a lower parts and library impact fee for condo projects. Is it? It is lower? Mr. Khan? Because I do think it is, and I wanna say, I think we're really at a crisis where they're having, I can't remember the last time a condo project came before us, and we just keep getting more and more apartments, and I love apartment dwellers and apartment residents, but you lose the sense of, in general, not in every instance, but you lose the sense of stakeholder-ness with the apartments compared to condos and even single-family homes. We've, we're way past the tipping point of 60%, maybe we're going 65% apartment versus ownership, and I don't think that's a healthy mix for the city. So, I think we should somehow determine how we can encourage that, whether it's through the use of those reduced impact fees, or, the real issue is the liability. Perhaps the reduction in those fees could be plowed into buying the builder's insurance that would cover construction defects, but it's, I mean, I'm ready to declare an emergency, state of emergency for the city of Glendale, because it's just not, you know, think of all the thousands of new units that we've seen, perhaps in the past 18 months before council, and none of them have been condos. And that's, I think we really have to take a hard look at that. It also, you know, it has, it has an effect when there's voting to be done, when some, let's say the school district wants to put a parcel tax in, the ones who are saddled with that parcel tax are the homeowners who pay their property tax, and very indirectly does a renter get that impact of a parcel tax. Therefore, they're more likely to vote for in what is really, I think, an unfair situation. Am I going too far, Mr. Golanyan? I'm, I'm sorry. Not time-wise, I'm talking about the, okay, that too. Okay, the second thing I'd like to raise is, at one point, and I forget who the discussion was with, I understood there were some challenges on this property because of the shoring on two sides, the Embassy Suites and the other office complex parking lot that is subterranean. Is there anything unusual that you are taking into account? Have you heard those concerns before? Because on two sides, you've got some pretty deep, deep parking.
It was one of the reasons why we...
Do you wanna come forward, please?
It was one of the reasons why we decided to eliminate one of the parking levels. It was getting a little not feasible to go that deep.
That's what I had heard, some other builder had mentioned that, but you've taken that into account, okay.
Yeah, it's a tall building next to us and a five-story garage structure in the back.
That's good. The next comment is, well, we're gonna have the BRT coming up Central, and the question is, is a stop planned for anywhere near this project? Do we know where those BRT, perhaps our Bradley Calvert?
I think one is Pacific and Glen Oaks, I know that one.
I can answer that question.
Oh, do you know?
Mr. Mayor, less than half a mile from the subject project, at the corner of Pacific and Glen Oaks, we will have a BRT.
Pacific and Glen Oaks, and then where would the next southerly?
Southerly?
Like, Pacific and Lexington, I mean, Central and Lexington. Wait, Pacific and Glen Oaks, you say?
Yes.
And there's not another stop?
On Central...
There must be another stop there, I think.
I think it turns onto Central first.
Not on the Central, I don't recall.
Nothing on Central. Well, I guess the point is, keep that in mind, there may be a stop, I mean, you should be aware of if there's a plan for that.
Okay.
Because that, the stations are gonna be rather expanded in scope, not your typical bus station, they're gonna be somewhat formal with a lot of shade structures and seating, so just keep that in mind when that occurs. Other than that, to the building itself, it's a nice-looking, it's a nice-looking project, the materials look good, the articulation is good, balconies are fine. I wish it was condos, but, you know, we can't keep repeating that. I think it's, it's a good project, and I see no reason not to approve that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from councilmembers?
Happy to move.
I can close the hearing, Ms. Minton.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. And we have a motion by Councilmember Asaturian, seconded by...
10A1, I take it, motion to approve.
Let's see. 10A1, motion to approve Stage Two Design Review. And seconded by Mr. Garpetian, let's take roll call.
Councilmember Asaturian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Congratulations. And this is the last we're gonna see of it, right? This is the final...
This is the final discretion reaction, correct.
Okay, and it is 11:00 PM. Do any of my colleagues insist that we move on to the mayor's election?
No.
Override my, our rule. Okay, then let's move, we're gonna continue 9C to the next meeting.
Mayor, I would like us to consider, since you have the discretion as chair to move items around, to consider some of these new business items in afternoon sessions when we normally handle sort of a city business, and, you know, I know that there's some folks who will criticize and say, well, you're denying the public an opportunity to comment. It's really more a procedural thing for us to decide what's gonna come back for a further discussion and public input, and some of these items, if, you know, I appreciate the rule that stops us at 11, but we keep kicking certain items on and on, and we wanna have an opportunity to have a discussion about the merits of why we should have a broader discussion.
Okay, well, does, how many, that's item 13, then, the new business?
New business, I do not have cards on any new...
No, but, but we will be discussing.
I mean, the challenge is, sometimes we have short discussions, more often, we have like a drawn-out discussion, right? It would just be easier to do it in the afternoon, and then it comes back in the evenings for us to hear.
Okay, well...
Just a reminder that under the new process, I mean, it is supposed to be a truncated discussion, right? The maker, two minutes for the maker to make his or her case with clarification questions by council.
Mayor, just to let you know, I do have an oral communications card.
That's for the second part of oral communications.
But I think that's...
Let me just see what our agenda says.
It's just the two items from this.
Okay, well, let's, should we go forward with this? These have been bumped a few times, if I'm not mistaken.
13A has.
13A, let's, let's hear 13A, please.
13A is discussion of councilmember's future agenda request, request for councilmember Asaturian to agendaize discussion of bulky item pickup, request process, and services with commercial waste haulers. It was carried over from 1021.
Councilmember Asaturian.
Thank you. I think this council has talked about this numerous times, but the current contracts that we have with our trash haulers put a requirement that after the second pickup, the families and the multifamily buildings have to actually pay an additional fee when single-family residents end up getting unlimited bulky item pickup. I'd like for us to review that, because what it's done in practice is create a process that individuals know that if they just use the system, they can get the bulky item pickup without paying the fee. I think it should be a fair system across the board for both multifamily and single-family homeowners. And then the second part of that is looking at how we're streamlining our systems with bulky item pickup. I've had this conversation with our staff, and I think that Mr. Hernandez was going to be looking at it with our trash haulers. I just want there to be a report and some suggestions from staff on consolidating all of that on our online system. So, for example, if somebody is submitting a request for bulky item pickup, they're able to do it through the same portal, like in many other cities, versus in ours right now, you go in and you can only submit it for single-family residents, but the ones that are for multifamily areas require for you to do it with the hauler themselves. And I've talked to some of the haulers, they have systems with other cities that allow for them to have one consolidated system.
I'd support a deeper discussion and a presentation on that.
Okay.
Yeah, same. I mean, this has been a problem for five years, so let's talk about it.
Roll call. Then, moved and seconded.
Councilmember Asaturian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
And, do you guys wanna do 13B?
I'll be very brief.
13B, please read into the record.
Request from Councilmember Kusakian to agendaize discussion on formal process for recusals when a councilmember has a conflict of interest.
I mentioned my reason for bringing it forward. I've passed out a form that I found online from City of LA Ethics Commission. It could be filled out by councilmembers, or really, members of any of the bodies where recusal is required, filed with the clerk, and the public can know what the actual reasons were for recusal.
I support it.
Sure.
We'll get a report on this. I mean, we may or may not adopt the same form.
Sure. It's not about that specific...
It's about the process, outlining the process, yeah, we can, we'll bring a report.
Okay. As grandfather of many of the ethics laws on council, I'm happy to support it as well.
Thank you.
Let's take, move, seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Asaturian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
I do not have any oral cards. Motion to adjourn?
One second before we adjourn, I have...
Mr. Garpetian.
Yeah, I wanna know what is the status of that, the test case idea? It came by, I brought it up over two months ago. I understand my colleagues have, they pile up different ideas on the agenda every week, you know, one or two or three, and we have already maybe 50, 60 of them. They all come, you know, they get in line before everything else, but I try not to do that, and, but I had one issue, and this issue's not coming back, there's...
This is a test claim?
Yeah.
Mr. Garpetian, we are, we are working on it.
I mean, I heard that like three times already.
Well, if you remember the last discussion, I indicated we were gonna try to get it done, you know, within this last quarter, so I can't give you an answer right now, it is, it is near the top of our list, it's just, as you know...
About the government funding?
Correct.
The mandates that...
Yeah, the, I mean...
Let me go back.
End up this quarter, it, I don't want it to end up in December. I only asked for one item, this is over a year, one item, and this is, this is not being, you know, so, I expect this to be done either next time or the following meeting, 18th or, before the end of November, basically.
Well, the 18th is the last meeting of the month, we'll, we'll try, but it may be first meeting in December.
Should we, Mr. City Manager, should we, is there, is there an appropriate time to go through that list and see what's relevant, what's not relevant, and what items have been waiting for reports?
Mayor, we certainly can, we update that list on a regular basis, but as Mr. Garcia noted, he's, he and his staff are working on this, so regardless of...
But in general, not, not this one in particular, but as a larger scale.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay.
He's emailed it to us, Dom just emailed it to us recently, and there's a working doc that she shared with all of us, so it's, the latest updated doc is in all of our files.
No, I know that, and every time I asked for it, you know, in private, they said, oh, I have this many items, so I want this thing done, I wanna have an answer, one way or the other, it's important, SB 79 is coming, we need to know what we can do, that's all.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, seconded.